Good evening, everyone. I will now call the public hearing of March ninth, twenty twenty three to order. Uh this meeting is convened by electronic means as such council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council member participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purpose of confirming quorum. Uh council members are reminded that in accordance with section fourteen point thirteen of procedure by law, members must enable their video to confirm quorum. If council member attending by electronic means lose the connection during the portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council member lose connection during the voting process, staff will get back you online quickly while we suspend the voting process. The contact information has been circulated to you. Members of parliament, uh sorry, members of public can view this proceedings via uh the live stream at and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out at Van City Clerk. We acknowledge knowledge that we are on the uncertain homelands of Musqueam, Squamish and the Sleeswatus people. We thank them for having care for this line and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. In case of emergency where we need to evacuate this building, I would like to direct your attention to the axis. There are two axes beyond the glass of this door and to the to the left. If this axis are obstructed, please direct your attention to the four axes in this chamber. Please use the stairs, do not use elevator. I would also like to highlight there uh there is uh defibrillators located at the end of the hallway, outset of the council chamber, just in case of the emergency. I also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contribution of the City of Vancouver's staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Sim is absent for personal reasons. Councillor Carr. Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
Councillor Dominado has a leave of absence for civic business from six to ten. Councillor Bly has a leave of absence for civic business from three to ten. Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Fry. Councillor Montague. Councillor Claussen.
Present.
Councillor Meisner. And councillor Joe is in the chair. The meeting, the hearing has quorum, Chair.
Thank you, Clerk. Okay, so before we begin, I have some announcement. The uh the public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Electronic participation is highly encouraged. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the the report being considered. Speakers uh should have state whether they are in support or in or opposed to the recommendations if and if they are resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in written uh through in writing through our online web form at vancouver dot C A slash public dash hearing dash comments. This link will be also tweeted. Those speaking on behalf of other person or groups will have eight minutes to speak and only if those represented are also uh are also on the line or in person and and must not be individual speakers themselves. Speakers who pre registers with presentations are reminded that public live feed has a slight delay, so to navigate through the slides of your presentation, please see next so that clerk will advance your slides. Council is committed to ensuring that all people who participate in council meeting or public hearing are treated fairly and respectfully. The language we all use in this meeting should reflect respect of all residents. No form of discrimination is acceptable or tolerated. Discrimination discriminatory languages including attacks or on groups of people or individuals. Vancouver's procedure by law prohibits prohibits uh uh council members from use of words, tone, speakers, or gestures that express a negative view of the character of any person or groups of people. Members of public are expected to not engage in proper conduct, which include the use of expressions that promote hatred or uh or are def- defamatory. The creation of the safe inclusive environment for the public, staff, council to participate is all of your our responsibilities. Members of council may call a point of order if the language used by another councillor during the meeting is not respectful. As the chair, I will ask speaker to modify their speech to ensure they are using respectful language. I also want to note City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including almost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we avoid using gender honorifics. We will instead refer to the person by first and last name, roles, or title. It remember that council's role in at a public hearing is to be quasi judicial body, which means council is to only consider the merits of the resoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying question from speakers, including including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate after uh after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from the speakers, council may one approve the application in principle, second refuse application, third refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, if the council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will reassess and reconvene the meeting on March thirtieth, twenty twenty three, at three P M. Okay, so we're gonna go through the first item on this agenda today. So first one, rezoning eight seventeen to eight thirty seven West Twenty Eighth Avenue and forty three seventy five Willow Street. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on this item? Alright, seeing none, the clerk will now read application and the summary of the correspondence received.
This is an application by Shape Architecture to rezone eight one seven to eight three seven West Twenty Eighth Avenue and four three seven five Willow Street from Residential District to Residential to R M eight A to allow for a townhouse or row house development with a maximum floor space ratio of one point two zero. No correspondence has been received on this item.
Thank you, Clerk. Uh any speaker for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be also tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Simon J., uh planner, planning urban design and and sustainability here to do the presentation. Uh we need a second. Okay, all in favor say yeah. Uh opposed say no. Okay, the motion carries. Thanks, Councilor Carr. So is there is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Um Ali here from developer side.
Oh, hi, Nathan. Sorry, Nathan Webster here from Shape Architecture as well.
So, Mayor and Council, your honor, just want to quickly say that we have designed with help of Shape Architecture and programmed twenty six units here for this townhouse development, of which over eighty percent of the units are family units, two and three bedrooms, six two bedrooms, fifteen three bedrooms. Uh we have also proposed preserving the large tree on the site and uh programmed a play area below it, around the tree, and also a little mini golf for adults, uh you know, in their free time. Just wanted to highlight these three items.
Thank you. Uh are there any question from council to staff or to the applicant team? Noting this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of applicant. Okay, seeing no other questions, we will now hear from the public. I don't think we have any speakers for this item. And clerk, do we still need to take five minutes recess?
Yes, Chair Joe, we would need to do a call a first time and a call a second time.
Okay, sure. So I just, okay, if there are any speakers from this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant codes one zero six one four four five before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be also tweeted out and made available on live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. So this is the second time.
And I'm just confirming Chair Joe that we have no one on the line at the moment and yes, if we could call a second time, please.
Thank you. Okay. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be also tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speaker in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Clerk, do we have any speakers?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the third the third time. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the uh the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. And we don't have any speakers, clerk?
Just checking. No, we're not seeing any. No, not on the line at the moment. So this was be where we would take the recess.
Okay, so let's take five minutes recess. We're gonna reconvene in five minutes.
I'm just checking. Give me a moment. No, there are no speakers on the line.
Thank you. So seeing there's no speakers, the speaker's list is now as few or or no public comments were received on this item after P M today. I suggest we now close the receipt, the public comments, move on to hearing the closing comments, asking for the questions to start and to make a decision. Does applicants have any closing comment? Okay. The staff have any closing comments? Does council have any questions for staff? So uh it it'll be moved by council car and second.
Hmm. Chair, can you please turn your microphone on?
Oh, sorry. Okay, there we go. Okay, so is there any debate, counsel? There's no debate, so we're gonna move on to the voting panel. Kirk, please take us to the voting panel, please. Also, please register your vote. Okay, so the item passed unanimously with council Okay, so the item passed unanimously with, uh, Councilor Domenado, Councilor Bly, uh, Mayor Sim absent. Thank you. We will now move on to the, the third item on the agenda, CD one resoning, uh, ten, uh, one, one oh three, one, one eleven, North Templeton Drive and twenty-one eighty-five Oxford Street. Does any council member wish to declare conflict of interest on this item? The clerk will now read the application, the summary of the correspondence received.
Sorry, this is an application by Quid Capital to rezone one oh three to one 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 North Templeton Drive and two one eight five Oxford Street from Residential District to Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story residential building containing thirty-six secured market rental units, a building height of twenty-one point one meters and floor space ratio of twenty, or two point four proposed. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing: eighteen pieces of correspondence in support, twenty-seven pieces of correspondence in opposition, and four pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received to five PM today.
Thank you, clerk. Uh, if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Uh, we have Joseph Tohill, a resoning planner, planning analyst for resoning center, planning urban design and sustainability here to present the application.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Joseph Tohill, and I am the rezoning planner for this application in the Grandview Woodland neighborhood. The subject site is approximately eleven hundred square meters in size and located on two lots on the northwest corner of Oxford Street and North Templeton Drive near the Port of Vancouver. It is currently zoned RM three A and contains two two-story apartment buildings. The surrounding neighborhood generally consists of a range of residential and local-serving retail, from single-dwelling homes to four-story apartments with commercial uses at grade. The site is located in an area that includes several parks, childcare centers, bike routes, and bus routes. Kowasa Neighborhood House and the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Center are all located within one kilometer of the site. Rezoning direction for the site is guided by the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, which was approved by council in July of 2016. The site is located within the residential core character area of the Cedar Cove neighborhood. This area is anticipated to retain affordable housing options and allow for incremental introduction of new rental housing surrounded by local shops, services, and improved public spaces. The plan allows rezonings for one hundred percent secure rental housing up to six stories and an FSR up to two point four. The site is also subject to the Grandview Woodland Pace of Change policy. This policy manages the uptake of applications that involve the demolition of existing market rental housing. Specifically, no more than five project sites with existing rental or a maximum of one hundred and fifty existing market rental units may be considered for redevelopment in the first three years of the plan. This project was the fifth and final site to be considered under this policy and would contribute a net twenty-three new rental units, with other sites on a waitlist for future consideration. In total, the five sites would result in the redevelopment of fifty-two existing rental units and a net gain of three hundred and seven new rental units. Staff were directed to report back on the feasibility of expanding similar tenant protections required under the Broadway Plan to renter-citywide and have interpreted this to include a review of tenant protections in the Grandview Woodland neighborhood. While this work is underway, staff can accept rezoning applications under the Pace of Change policy until the one hundred and fifty existing unit redevelopment limit is reached. Staff may explore a further interim step and would issue a council memo at that time. This application was received on December tenth of 2021. The proposal is for a six-story residential building with thirty-six secure market rental units at a height of twenty-one point one meters and a floor space ratio of two point four. One level of underground parking is proposed with access from the lane. The site contains existing primary rental units, and the rezoning application triggers the city's Tenant Relocation and Protection Policy, or TRPP. There are currently thirteen tenancies on site, with six that are eligible for compensation under the TRPP and seven that are not eligible for compensation under the TRPP. For primary rental, tenants must have been residing in the building for one year or more at the time the rezoning application was submitted to be eligible under the TRPP. The applicant has submitted a tenant relocation plan, which outlines the package of supports and compensation provided to eligible tenants, including financial compensation based on length of tenancy. The terms of this plan meet the TRPP requirements and are provided in Appendix E of the report. In addition, the applicant has optionally agreed to provide ineligible tenants with a lump sum payment of two thousand dollars in compensation. All tenants must be provided with a minimum of four months' notice to end tenancy after all permits are issued, and this includes all development, building, and demolition permits. Eligible tenants have the right of first refusal, which would allow them to return to the building at a twenty percent discount off starting rents. This table provides a comparison between the market rent and homeownership based on unit sizes. This application is providing secure market rental units, which are typically more affordable than homeownership costs for units of the same size. Staff received seventy-six pieces of feedback through the public consult pro- public consultation process for this application. Support was expressed for the addition of rental housing, the building design, and the building heights, density, and massing. He concerns were for the building heights, the affordability of the proposed rental units, parking and traffic impacts, and impacts from construction. In response, staff note that the height complies with the Grandview Woodland Plan. Existing eligible tenants will be offered an option to return to the new building at twenty percent below starting market rents. Rezoning conditions will require the applicant to address traffic and construction impacts, and the, uh, the development is eligible for parking reductions with a transportation demand management plan to encourage residents to use sustainable transportation options. This project proposes thirty-six secure rental units, which would contribute a net twenty-three new units to the city's rental stock and support the Grandview Woodland Public Benefits Strategy. DCLs of about nine hundred and twenty-six thousand are anticipated. In summary, this proposal meets the intent of the Grandview Woodland Plan. Staff recommend this application be approved, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Uh, is the applicant team here to speak to the application? Okay, are there any questions from council to, uh, to staff or to the applicant team, noting this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions to the application, to the applicant? Okay. Councilor Kirby Young, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I have two questions that, uh, I'd like to ask based on some of the correspondence that council is receiving and, and, um, what we're hearing with respects to the concerns that I suspect are going to be raised by our speakers tonight. Um, and so I'm looking for clarity on two, two points. The first one is, um, why there is no inclusion of the below-market units, as for example, if a project comes in under the SRP or secured rental policy that's required. Can you speak to why it, the policy is different in this situation?
Thanks for your question, counselor. Um, I'm gonna refer this question to one of my colleagues, uh, in community planning? Or housing?
I only have five minutes, and I do have two questions.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Kirby Young, Andrew Pasque, Community Planning Department. Uh, so when the Grandview Woodland Plan was produced, the directions, I'm sorry, the microphone is breaking up here. I hope you can hear me okay. Uh, the directions in the plan set out, uh, objectives related to the development of new secured rental, uh, housing in the areas in question. Um, this was based on extensive consultation with the community in terms of the type of housing that might be required in the neighborhood, uh, the nature of built form considerations, people's comfort levels around different types of housing, heights that might be associated with different housing, and so on. Uh, so the opportunity to introduce, uh, non-market housing was considered and built into the plan in other subareas, uh, in particular Broadway and Commercial and along the Hastings Corridor. But in this area, where, um, the incremental jump in height contemplated in the plan goes from four to six stories, uh, there was not an, an ability to do so within the economic testing that we, uh, we undertook with, with the plan.
So reflect, reflecting back, it's, it's because it's compliant with the Grandview Woodlands Plan, but the area plan limits the height, therefore, if more height had been allowed, we may have been able to see the inclusion of below-market units?
Uh, if I understand your question to finance non-market housing, you would need to look at, at things like additional height and density to offset that, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, I'm gonna move on to my second question. This is what I also suspect we're gonna hear, so I thought it would be great to get this clarity off the top and level set tonight. Um, and that is with respects to the TRPP, uh, and some folks suggesting that the Broadway Plan has stronger tenant protections specific to that, so that planning zone and area, um, that are stronger than the TRPP that applies in this area in Grandview Woodlands, and why can't, for example, the Broadway Plan tenant protections be applied to this case?
Your question, counselor. I'm gonna refer that to my colleagues in housing.
Thank you, Counselor Annie Moblis, uh, Senior Planner for Housing Regulation. Um, uh, I guess that, you know, the, the consideration, um, for the tenant protections in, in this part of the city fall under the citywide, as you've mentioned, the 2019 policy. Um, in order to, um, uh, uh, provide, uh, tenant protections that, like we see in, um, Broadway Plan, excuse me, we would need to do additional work, um, to recalibrate effectively, as Andrew mentioned, the heights and densities in the plan, to be able to, um, uh, pay for those additional tenant protections, and that was something that was possible in the Broadway Plan, but not considered here and contemplated here in the Grandview Woodland Plan.
Okay, so I, I just wanna reflect back. So again, the, the height and density limiting factor, but also, am I correct that the applicant would come forward under the existing plans and it's council's responsibility to consider the application based on the policy, even if, um, that applies to the specific area? So if council did desire to, uh, consider looking at policy changes around tenant relocation, that would be done in a council-type of situation outside of the hearing where we're supposed to judge an application based on the policy it comes in under? Is that correct?
That, yes, if I understand your question, that's right. The, in this instance, with this site, um, it's the citywide TRP that the applicant's required to follow, and, um, we've reviewed that, and the applicant is following the citywide TRP, the 2019 policy.
Okay, and could the city, and I just wanna be explicitly clear on this, does council have the authority to do differently, or no, we should judge the application based on the policy that is in place for a particular area?
I, I, I think, um, I may, maybe there are other staff that would like to weigh in. I think the, the challenge is the, the TRP, um, comes with a cost. Um, the compensation, right of first refusal, the same rents, potentially rent top-ups, like you see in the Broadway Plan, um, do come with a cost, and so it would be difficult to assess whether or not those additional costs, if they were considered by council for this application, would have a detrimental effect on the proposal, whether or not the applicant would be able to proceed.
And my time's just up, but it'd potentially delay this project and deliver the rental.
It would likely delay the project, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby Young. Councilor Meisner?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I noted in, uh, the Grandview Woodland Plan, uh, Public Benefits Tracker that's included in Appendix F, um, from 2016, we haven't delivered any non-market housing units in the Grandview Woodland Plan. So just wondering what some of the challenges are there and, uh, why that would be.
Thanks for your question, counselor. I'm gonna refer that over to my, uh, colleague in community planning.
Thank you, Counselor Meisner. Um, you are correct. Uh, as of the, the Public Benefits Tracker that you're looking at, uh, there haven't been any, uh, non-market units, uh, completed at this point in time. I can tell you now, um, since that was produced, there have been a number of projects that have been approved that are in the pipeline, uh, and, uh, including some that have been in front of council, uh, fairly recently, uh, and a couple of other projects, um, that, uh, that staff are, uh, currently working on with, uh, with proponents. So we do expect to see non-market housing coming online in the neighborhood, uh, in fairly short order. Uh, and I just note as well that the neighborhood actually is, um, uh, a neighborhood, um, that has a fair number of non-market housing units already in place, and so part of the policies are really aimed at trying to retain that stock as well.
Okay. What have some of the challenges been up until now in producing that non-market housing in this, in Grandview Woodland?
Uh, well, I think they're probably the same challenges that we see in many other areas. It, it costs a lot, and so one of the, the chief ways that we look at financing non-market housing is through, um, uh, through, uh, market density. We have, uh, seen a number of projects, uh, in the neighborhood, um, uh, approach the, the question of non-market housing and, and seek to develop it. We know that it is financially very difficult, uh, and so the negotiations and conversations we have with those applicants, uh, tend to take, uh, a much longer period of time to, to proceed, uh, in the absence, in particular, of, of senior government funding, um, being sort of a, a key mechanism there. Um, that being said, as I mentioned, there are a number of projects, uh, that are, uh, that are seeming quite favorable, and we do expect to report back on that soon.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. Uh, other question was around, um, the right of first refusal, and just wanna get a sense of how, what the percentage is usually, uh, with, uh, people returning back to the building once it's completed, the new building that is. Is it fifty percent? Is it less, more? Just wondering what the average is.
Yeah, thanks for your question, counselor. I'm gonna refer that over to my colleagues in housing.
Yes, thank you, Counselor, uh, for the question. Uh, we don't have data on the percentage that return, unfortunately. Um, uh, I think in, in this case, um, the, those tenants moved in fairly recently, and so it means that they are paying higher rents because they're recently rented. Um, I would say for tenants who might have been living in a building for twenty years, sometimes we see people living in buildings for thirty years, their rents are really low, and so the twenty percent discount from the market rents are really not attainable for them. Um, so it really depends on the situation, the area, the city, and that length of tenancy is, is really key, because how it translates into the discount to the market rents, um, means for, for many of those tenants that are paying low rents, that it's not possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Meisner. Councilor Frye?
Yeah, thanks. Also, similar questions around the, the tenant issues with this project. Um, I guess, and, and, and I appreciate the comments around recalibrating, um, to meet the TRPP that we've suggested in the Broadway Plan. Just as a, as a wild, just a very informal guess, what, how many additional floors or how much more density would we have to add to meet that kind of, and would it be consistent with the kind of context for CD one in this area as already outlined? And I realize that is just a wild question, but...
Hi, Counselors. Yardley McNeil, Director of Rezoning. Uh, it's speculative at best, and we'd need to do a lot more, uh, income testing and, or sorry, financial testing to get you a better answer on that. Um, I would hesitate to even give you an anecdotal response to it without knowing more information about that.
But significantly more than, than is being contemplated here and potentially more than is contemplated in the Grandview Woodland Area Plan?
Uh, yes, I would, I would say it is. Frankly, it would be, um, several more floors in particular, but I would hesitate.
Totally, no, that's, that's totally fine. Um, so now I know that the Grandview Woodland Plan really leaned heavily into the, the, the pace of change and recognizing that there are a lot of affordable, and I don't think we've actually had a reckoning of what the current rents are in this building or what the rents of the area are. And so I'm curious how pace of change reflects the current rents for the tenants in this building and the, the sort of rents around the area and, and where we're at with affordable rental housing in, in Grandview Woodland and Cedar Cove.
Um, so maybe just to clarify your question, so the pace of change policy is referring to the redevelopment of existing rentals, um, irrespective of, of the, the rent for those units. Um, are you, are you wanting to...
So, so the pace of change does not articulate the sort of nature of affordability of rents?
That, that's correct. It just refers to the redevelopment of existing rental, whatever that rental rate may be.
Okay, so still with that question in mind, then, where are we at with the pace of change, and where are we at with, do we have a, a sense of how this, um, what the adjacency kind of rents are and what the current rents are in this building?
Um, I believe the applicant's here to respond to questions about what the current rents are. Um, um, so perhaps, uh, might direct that to them.
We do have information in the council report around average rents in this area, and, um, that is available, and Annie Moblis is here for further information.
Hi, Emily Brooker. Oh, it's noisy. Um, yeah, housing policy regulation. So, yeah, the average market rents in the neighborhood for newer buildings, um, is So yeah, the average market rents in the neighbourhood for newer buildings, this is the East Hastings neighbourhood, built in 2000 or later, is about 1,700 for a studio, about 1,900 for a one-bed, about 2,700 for a two-bed and 27, it says 2,700 for a three-bed head too. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Well, I was really looking for more of the overall sort of stock in the neighbourhood, including this, which is an older building, obviously renovated in 2018. But the average rents rather than the market rents per se?
Okay, like average rents kind of across the whole stock?
Yeah, yeah. And we don't have that kind of data presented?
We do. That's the data that's in the council report. Yeah, I can, I can get it.
Okay, I'll leave it at that for the moment.
Thank you, councillor Frye. Councillor Boyle?
Thanks, Chair. My questions follow up from that. Well, I think, do we know the current rents of the tenants in the building? Maybe that's a question for the proponent.
Hi, I'm Chip Lyle. I'm the development manager for the project and owners representative. I don't have the exact numbers right in front of me right now. I can look them up, but I can tell you that the project was, the existing buildings were updated quite recently, as you mentioned, in 2018. So they are closer to market rates. They're not below what's in the area and yeah, they're, I can look them up and try and find out, but I don't have them off the top of my head right now.
Okay. While you're standing, maybe I'll ask too, and we may hear this from speakers, but do you have a sense of how long some of the, I know about half of the tenants aren't eligible for the TRPP because they're newer, I assume. Do you have a sense of how long some of the longer tenants have been in the building?
Yeah, actually, the, I believe the longest one is, the earliest one is in 2019. So it's roughly between two to, anywhere from nine months is the newest one. But I don't believe there's anybody more than two years.
Okay, nobody's, none of the current tenants have been there longer than two years?
No, that's right. There is, yeah, no.
Okay. That is helpful to know. I have a couple of questions for city staff too. And first, wondering if you can just clarify for me so I, so I make sure I understand this properly. The pace of change policy limits to five, the number of new rental buildings that are replacing existing secure rental buildings. Is there a limit on, say, new rental buildings coming in where there's just single-family homes?
The pace of change policy applies to the RM zone sites and that would be for secure rental buildings currently in the Grandview Woodland neighbourhood.
Okay, my sense is a fair amount of that area, and correct me if I'm picturing the wrong blocks, is a mix of existing secure rental and older single-family homes. And that those single-family homes could be rebuilt as market rental. Would that still count within the pace of change limit?
So I'm just going to refer that question to my colleague in community planning.
Thanks, Joseph. And thank you councillor Boyle for the question. So pace of change as a policy will apply to any project with rental, whether or not that's a purpose-built rental building, an apartment building, or a building with secondary rental, detached house, townhome and so forth. So you're correct, the RM3A and RM4 neighbourhoods where it applies in Grandview Woodland, quite a mix of different types of housing, older apartment buildings, townhomes, detached housing. And so the policy applies to any buildings in those areas that are zoned such that have rental.
And do we have any policy tools within the Grandview Woodland Plan or elsewhere that look to encourage more rental where there's the least displacement? Seems to me in the, in the types you outlined, that there's some places that would have fewer impacts to renters than others.
Sure, absolutely. There are other areas, and I don't have a map of the neighbourhood in front of me right now, but there certainly are other areas where, where development is encouraged. That could be secondary rental or purpose-built rental. Hastings Street, there are a number of sites along there that have been identified as such, Broadway. The plan in some areas really calls out areas for non-market housing or also remains in some instances tenure agnostic, meaning you could build strata or rental. We've certainly seen projects go both ways in that sense. So there are other opportunities within the neighbourhood outside of the RM3A and RM4 zoned areas where you can build rental.
Sorry, thank you. I have just one more question, which is I'm curious, maybe this is for the applicant. If the building was updated in 2018, what's the, what's the current condition? It seems pretty quick to rebuild rather than building new rental where there's not a recently updated rental building.
When the building was purchased, just before then, there was some serious life safety issues as well as just general condition of the, of the building was in quite a bad state. So it was renovated just to really bring it up to a proper code and livable level. And then being in this, the rate of change policy, we're applying for our rezoning application because it's, we're just coming for it now. It was a, forward to us.
Sorry, so we're already 30 seconds overdue?
Okay, I'm out of time. Yes, thank you, sorry. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Boyle. Councillor Carr?
Thanks very much. I'd like to also talk about the pace of change policy. Now, my understanding in reading the report is that the Grandview Woodland Plan says that no more than five project sites or a maximum of 150 existing market rental units can be redeveloped in the first three years of the plan and that this project is one that is eligible. So how long has actually the, this project been in the works, so to speak? Because the Grandview Woodland Plan was what, 2016?
So this particular application was submitted in December of 2021. So that's when we would have received it. That's, that's as far, far back as we can go for this. I don't know how long the applicant might have been working on it prior to that, but the, that was when the application was submitted.
So can I conclude from that, that there have not been that many projects in the Grandview Woodland Plan, if it's a maximum of five, that have been actually earmarked for development? Is that the case?
We do have projects on a waitlist as well and those projects are coming in in sequence by, from the time that they're, they're submitted. But just because of the length of time it takes to go through a rezoning process and review those sites, it can take a bit of time to work through that list. But there is a waitlist currently of projects waiting to come in through the policy.
Now, there are, but this one's been there since 2021 and there's only five in the first three years. So doesn't sound to me like a very fast pace of change. I'm just verifying that. In other words, not that many projects have come forward for redevelopment under the Grandview Woodland Plans in this area.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to know. I've got some other questions and I think they're more probably directed to the applicant. One has to do with the children's play areas and I noticed that one of the, there is an outdoor play area at the ground level, I understand, that is for children. There's also an indoor amenity space at ground level. And then I noticed one of the conditions of approval is to actually have a children's play area in the rooftop. Maybe you could respond to that, is that, I think that's a condition of approval. Maybe you can clarify.
Thank you, councillor. My name's Neil Robertson and I'm project architect for this project. Yes, indeed councillor, currently we are showing a children's play area on the, on the western side and an attached exterior, in, sorry, excuse me, interior amenity area. That is, that is a suggestion of staff is to put something up on the roof. The challenge that we run into when we, this building is a six-story building, so we're allowed to build out of wood frame, which is a much more cost-effective building typology relative to a non-compostable construction. As soon as we put another floor on this building, we click over to having to do non-compostable construction, so concrete and/or steel, which is a significantly much more expensive form of construction. Now, there is a possibility under provisions of the building code due to a minimal elevator overrun, which would just let people out, just in a little vestibule. The challenge with that though is it requires significant upgrading of the structure on the roof level, which again affects the cost of this building. So if we, if we, if we, we would, I've been speaking with the, with the ownership group, we are looking into it. It really comes down unfortunately to what's financially viable at this time and we haven't done that, that deep dive. It's something we'd look to do if we can accommodate it, but we couldn't commit to it at this time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. It's good clarification, especially, I think all of us know that the construction of wood frame buildings is less expensive and it's good, it's less concrete, better for the...
Concrete sequestering, or sorry, carbon sequestering, all that good stuff.
Exactly. Okay, okay, that's, that's good to know. I noticed also that there's a substantial commitment around landscaping, 22 new trees, I think I read.
That's correct.
So I'm assuming, you know, the climate is changing quite rapidly and I'm assuming that there is a tension to the actual viability of species, certain species, and you're taking that into consideration in that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Carr. Councillor Meisner?
Thank you. Just another question occurred to me for the applicant. You mentioned that no one in the building had been there longer than two years, is that correct?
Sorry councillor, could you repeat the question?
There was a mention that no one in the building had been residing there for more than two years, is that correct?
Oh, I'll defer to the ownership. I'm the building design guy.
Okay, sorry.
This guy talk.
It's either two years or just, just over, but yeah.
When the renovation took place, that was in 2018, is that correct?
I'm not specific on the exact time, but it would be around 2018, yes.
Did everybody have to move out when the renovation was underway or...
I don't know that because previous owner did some work as well.
Okay.
I was not involved with the project or anything, so I'm just working on the rezoning application at this time, but I don't know the answer, who is in or which units or where that were, had to get updated because I know some were done before.
Okay. Just trying to get a sense of why a recently renovated building would be slated for redevelopment.
Yeah.
It's not a massive increase in units, so just wondering, the viability of the project? Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Meisner. So I think there's no other question from the council. We will now hear from the public. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445 before the close of the speakers' list. The phone, the phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added at the end of the registered speakers list. Uh, we're going to go to the first speakers, Rebecca Love. I think you are attending in person. Hi Rebecca, please come to the podium. You have five minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, council. Unlike every other person who has stood in front of you to oppose a housing project, I am in fact a NIMBY. Well, more of a please don't take my backyard, but that doesn't make a neat acronym. To be a tenant in this city is to live under a sword of Damocles, a lethal object pointed at our heads held by a thin string of hope and certainty. Even if one has a safe and stable home, how long will it last? With policies that have relegated new rental developments only on top of existing affordable rental developments, how can any of us ever sleep peacefully? While I am a tenant of one of the sites marked for demolition, I've also spent the last year speaking to other tenants in the neighbourhood. I've been in buildings that are rotting from intentional neglect, yet still command eye-watering rents. I've been in well-kept buildings with happy tenants who nonetheless realise that their luck could change rapidly if that building sells. I've counseled many people being turned out of their suites due to sales or landlord use, informing them of the rights they didn't know they had. Worst of all, I've spoken with tenants in nonprofit housing who were treated very badly during an ongoing redevelopment and have had to since leave the city. No form of rental housing seems to be safe. Even our vaunted and aging co-ops can end up on the chopping block if the land beneath them outpaces the value of the homes on top of them. While Vancouver is fixated on growth, the city isn't growing so much as replacing the people who have lived here for years, whose luck finally ran out. We continuously push people out either to the suburbs, the interior and beyond, exporting our problems to other areas, which then leads to displacement of the people in those areas, typically to the streets, another place unlucky Vancouverites end up. Then again, perhaps I shouldn't be surprised that a city founded on displacing the people who were here first continues to do so 136 years later without remorse. And yet despite all of that, we are the lucky ones because we actually have a chance to influence our fate and I do not take that lightly. As a single mom, I was evicted previously because the suite I lived in sold. It was one of the most stressful experiences of my life until the redevelopment sign appeared in my yard last January without warning. During my previous eviction, I only got one month's rent and had to find my own new accommodations, which at that point were still far more expensive than what I'd been paying, but at least I did have options at that point. Considering that these buildings were renovated in 2018, we are all paying near-market rents already. At the time, my family was looking to move from a dank basement back into the light. We didn't want to rush things so we could find the exact place that we wanted. In the neighbourhood we've been in for 10 years, near friends and community, not facing a arterial, lesson learned after living right on Hastings Street and trying to diagnose a child's mystery breathing problems due to, due to the pollution coming in. And large enough for all of us to have separate sleeping spaces due to accessibility needs. After nine months and rejecting numerous suites, we thought we'd found a good permanent home for at least the next 10 to 20 years because we gave, we gave up on home ownership quite a while ago. We finally got a cat. We settled in in the fall of 2019, which by the way, was about three and a half years ago, so it is 2023. Jumping ahead, after weathering the first parts of the pandemic intact, we now have a bigger threat looming over us. We tenants have already put our demands in multiple places, but I will reiterate them now. We want everyone currently living in the buildings to be covered by the tenant relocation protections and we want the same protections that the Broadway Plan gives to renters along its corridors, an option for top-up rents in lieu of payouts and a right to return at our previous rents. 20% off of market rates doesn't mean anything when the current average rent for a three-bedroom is 4,500. By the way, right now we pay 3,100 and I can tell you everyone else's rent as well if you would like. Truly, the thing that worries me most and keeps me up most nights is not money, it's that we have nowhere to go. And all the times I have seen council discuss tenant protections, only one of you has ever mentioned the need for swing housing. And I'm here to say, we need swing housing, as does every other renter who may be displaced by these policies. You cannot continue to treat tenants as disposable pests. We are human beings and we have a right to housing. As I previously said, I've talked to a lot of tenants and those tenants are now talking to each other. You may not be aware of the sea change that's on the way, so I'm here to tell you, tenants are organizing for a better life and we are going to win. We are not just numbers on the spreadsheet, we are not ore for wealth extraction, we are here to live and work and soon thrive in this city because this city is ours. If Sean the Sea fell off the map tomorrow, it wouldn't have nearly the same effect on the city if Grandview Woodland and its already-dense rental areas did. Much like we need a just transition to tackle climate change, we also need a just transition for housing. Tenants deserve not to be left behind. My final word is to any renters who may be tuning in, don't wait for the sale or redevelopment sign to show up. Organize now, talk to your neighbours now, form a building committee now. These are our neighbourhoods and it's time we take our rightful place as full citizens of Vancouver.
Thank you Rebecca. You are 20 seconds over, but I'll let you speak. Okay, you do have one more question from councillor Frye. Please go ahead councillor Frye.
Hi, thanks for joining us. And thanks for talking to me outside. So you mentioned you have at least one child and a cat?
Yes.
Kid is going to school in the neighbourhood?
Correct.
How has the tenant relocation process, have they, have somebody come and talked to you about, and you mentioned swing housing and I appreciate the bringing that up because that is a very critical kind of consideration and something we've talked a lot about. What kind of options have been presented to you? Has there been a robust kind of effort?
No, we actually had to go to the city to ask about it because we had not gotten any kind of communication from the landlord or the owner until we did that.
I'm sorry, you, there was no overture?
No.
Tenant relocation protection policy?
Not until I specifically said, you are supposed to send us this form right now legally. And then they said, oh, okay, here you go. So yeah, it's basically, we've just been presented with the standard city options.
Okay, so without getting into the specifics of your living arrangement, do you lack confidence that you'd be able to find similar affordability configuration?
It's not even affordability, like the suites just straight up don't exist. Like I've been checking Craigslist on and off. Like I've been checking Craigslist on and off for the past year, just because I like to freak myself out. And there is nothing out there. I mean, you can maybe find a house with three bedrooms that allows pets, but it's gonna be six thousand dollars a month, and also you have to get out after four months. That's what's out there.
Right, so it's really not even so much an issue of, obviously affordability is always an issue, but really you're talking about just a lack of available space.
Exactly.
Which is the most perverse conundrum of this whole thing, is as we try and add more housing supply, we are at the same time.
Yes.
Creating this horrible cycle. Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate how stressful this is for you, and I appreciate you coming to speak to us today.
Thank you. You have another question, Councilor Kirby, please go ahead.
Yeah, hi there, over here. Thanks for speaking to council, so I just wanted to follow up, I appreciated your comment around swing housing, but I just wanted to follow up on your comment, you said it wasn't even so much about the money, it was just about having somewhere to go or a place to live.
Yes.
If you had the opportunity, would you return, given?
Given the lack of other options, yes.
You would, if you had the option.
Even though the suites that so far are about two-thirds the size of what we're in now. Hopefully this time around, the building would stay up for longer than five years.
Okay, because the building was built, as far as you know.
I think it was built in the sixties, but it was renovated in 2018, and all of those tenants were turned out. So this will be two generations of tenants turned out in five, six years.
Okay, so it was upgraded for like life safety issues we heard earlier, but it was built in the sixties, so probably sixty.
Yeah, I'm a little curious about those life safety issues, to be honest. This is the first I've heard.
Okay, but a sixty, sixty-five-year-old building?
Approximately, yeah, I would say, yeah.
Okay, so you have the right to return, but your, your concern is where you live in the interim?
Yes.
Have I summed that up?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, Councilor Meisner.
Yeah, thanks for speaking Rebecca, and sorry to hear about the challenging situation you're in. I just wanted to confirm, you mentioned that everybody was moved out during the renovations, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and can you tell me what kind of renovations took place?
I actually sent the entire sales brochure in, although I understand that I should have sent it directly to council. It was a great brochure, it outlined everything. They completely repiped it, completely renovated the kitchens and bathrooms, and redid the floors.
Okay, and you were living there before that or just after?
Just after. We were the second tenants in our apartment after, the first people left after a year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you Rebecca, you have other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Second speaker is Ashley Fisher, is calling on the line. Is Ashley on the line?
I'm, I'm here, yeah.
Thanks Ashley, please go ahead.
I can hear myself, okay.
You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening councillors, my name's Ashley Fisher, I'm a resident in Vancouver. I actually live in the 2100 block of Oxford Street, in a multi-unit rental building, very similar to the building on the corner of Templeton and Oxford. And so this issue hits especially close to home for me. I've lived in this street for over ten years, and I'm against the proposal for a number of reasons. The first one is that, it's been mentioned already, but this building was thoroughly renovated just a few years ago. And so demolishing it and rebuilding would just be extremely wasteful from an environmental perspective. And when all those people were displaced, it was, it was really sad. Many of them had been there for a really long time. The folks that I talked to and the folks that I had known who had lived there, most of them did end up leaving the city. And I wish I'd had this opportunity to speak for them back then. But yeah, everyone was like, was kicked out. And then the construction of, like this construction is gonna take thirteen rental units, out of the pool of rental units in Vancouver for I don't know how many years. But at this time of scarce rental housing, it doesn't make sense to like remove rental units from the supply. And I know that you've talked about the like, the rate of change plan and all of that. But like this is thirteen units and not adding that many to the pile. The existing units, like well, they're not, they're not huge by any means, but they do have multiple bedrooms, and they are big enough to house like a family. It's really hard to find a place to rent in this city, and that is doubly true if you're a family with children. And these units have children in them, they're kids who go to our local schools, you know, you see them around the neighborhood. And if they move away, like even temporarily, even if they find somewhere temporarily to move to, they're gonna have to change schools, and it's gonna be incredibly disruptive to their lives. I know it was mentioned earlier that no one has been in that building for more than two years, but I don't think that's true. I'm pretty sure there's been folks who've been there for like three, three and a half years, four years. I'm not, not against development, like in general, I'm in favor of it. There's some other applications around, I see going up on single-family homes. Like there's big houses on big lots, and having those replaced by multifamily buildings that can accommodate like multiple families would be excellent. In particular, I would actually love to see more buildings of the kind on the corner of Templeton and Oxford, you know, individual units that have their own front and back door, but they're still dense and they're still close together. And so we can get lots of people into a small space, but everyone still has like their own space, a little garden, big enough for like two parents, a couple of kids, maybe work from home. They're, they're plenty dense, like this is not the right spot for this kind of development. And I'm also concerned about the traffic. We have, so we're sort of one block down from the intersection of like Dundas and Nanaimo, which is a really busy intersection during rush hours, folks are trying to get to and from the freeway. And we do see a lot of cars kind of like trying to cut that corner. And so I'm concerned about adding thirty-six like one-bedroom units, like what that's going to do to traffic. And just like this big tall thing right in the middle of my quiet residential neighborhood. Like there aren't buildings that tall yet, even like on the main thoroughfares of Dundas or McGill and Nanaimo. Like there are more appropriate spots for this kind of proposal. And I would really like to see one of those five allotments freed up for something, something else. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you Ashley for speaking to the council. See no other question, we're gonna move to the third one on the list, Michael Berenberg. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak on behalf of myself and my family. My name is Michael Berenberg, I'm a resident at 105 Templeton Drive North, where I live with my partner, my stepdaughter, and my cat. Both myself and my partner have full-time employment in corporate positions, and in short, we're what I describe as middle-class. After bouncing around separately for years, three and a half years ago, and yes, that's three and a half years ago, not two years, this, this apartment became our first home together. It's been really great to feel like we're setting down some roots and become part of the neighborhood. I've enjoyed running the quiet streets in the early morning hours. My stepdaughter has gone to school and made friends here. And while the cat hasn't exactly made friends, I know he feels he's made a deep, personal, perhaps even intimate connection to every single crow he's glared at from our front window. My partner and I are walking distance from grocery stores, restaurants, coffee shops, and even our workplace. It's a great place to live. In short, we like it here and we'd rather not be forced to leave. We moved in a few years ago knowing that these were recently renovated rental homes. That seemed to suggest no changes would be in the works for quite a while, but as it turns out, not so much. Now we face demeviction, something, as you might imagine, I strongly oppose. So obviously now we're faced with the prospect of being evicted at some unknown but ever approaching future date. And this leaves us with an equally obvious question, where are we going to go? We know that under the city's TRP policy, we're entitled to certain protections, including, and I quote, "that upon request assistance with identifying at least three alternative accommodation options must be provided." Options will be provided that best meet the tenants' identified priorities such as budget preferences, neighborhood, and specific preferences such as being pet-friendly. But let's be honest about what we can expect. We know from speaking to multiple tenants who've been evicted from other buildings, that what this actually means is you'll send us a few Craigslist ads. That's it. And I have to tell you, as an IT professional, I know how to use Craigslist. That's not meaningful relocation assistance. That's a half dozen mouse clicks, filling in a few details, and then cutting and pasting the results into an email. It's not what anyone should consider serious. And as a side note, if you've ever tried to find an apartment in this housing market that's the right size and location for your family needs, and allows you to bring your delightful pet along, you'll understand it's no easy feat. And then I read about the Broadway Plan and I think, hey, wait, why are some renters in this city getting a better deal than others? Why do certain tenant protections apply in some neighborhoods but not mine? Eviction is eviction, whether you're in Kits or East Van or near Broadway. It's still uprooting our lives as much as anyone else's. As a reminder, the Broadway Plan includes the right of first refusal for existing tenants to return to the new building at their current rent, or a twenty percent discount on citywide average market rents, whichever's less, the choice to receive a temporary rent top-up to the difference between their current rent and a rent in a new unit during the construction of the new building, and assurance that returning tenants will return to new homes that are an appropriate size for their household. That is a staggeringly better deal than what we've been offered. We've been offered a lump sum payment based on four months of rent, the aforementioned basically meaningless relocation assistance, and the right to return at a twenty percent discount on rent. But let's not kid ourselves, even with a twenty percent discount, we can expect our rent to jump dramatically. And based on the floor plans we've seen, that higher rent would go to pay for a smaller unit. We're effectively being told to leave and not come back, an odd notion in a city that prides itself, per its website, as being one of the best places to live in the world. I hope that this council will see fit to reject this rezoning, but failing that, that you'll do better by your fellow citizens to ensure that we at least all get a fair deal. If you don't do it for me, then at least do it for the cat. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Michael, thank you for speaking to the council. Okay, you have no more question? Thank you. The next one is Nicole Dodd. Nicole is in person? Oh, it's on the line, okay. Please go ahead, Nicole, you have five minutes. Hello Nicole, can you hear us? Hello Nicole, can you hear us? We can hear you. Okay, so speaker four is not online, on the line, we're gonna go back. So speak number five, Jennifer Efting. Jennifer is in person today. Hi Jennifer, thanks for coming to city council. Please go ahead, you have five minutes.
Okay, hi everybody. My name is Jennifer Efting, and I'm here to speak against the redevelopment application at Oxford and Templeton. I, my connection to the neighborhood is that I lived there for many, many years myself. I lived down the street at 2165 Oxford Street, and actually brought my first daughter home to Oxford Street as a baby. She took her first steps on Oxford Street. And the housing I lived in was very, very similar to the row housing on Templeton. Sort of a perfect environment actually for a family. And what I wanted to say is that people deserve to have a place, a stable place and a safe place to raise kids in Vancouver. Kids deserve to feel safe and secure in their housing. And the, the impact on the mental health of kids, I don't think should be discounted. To constantly be shuffled along and be worried about the safety of their housing is not something any child should have to deal with. And that safety, that sense of safety and security should be the right of all children, not just the children of the rich, not just families from Shaughnessy and Dunbar, all families. The housing at Templeton and Oxford being considered for redevelopment should be the most, in my mind, would have been the most secure housing for renters. It's dedicated rental housing, it's been around for decades, it is in good condition. And I can understand renters coming into the units and thinking they could set down roots and that they were safe. I would have told a renter that it was a safe place to move into. And I know the sense of safety and relief for somebody looking for family-friendly housing, to get a call from the landlord and having the landlord say, you can move in, you have a place to go with your kids. I know that feeling. If you've ever rented in Vancouver, you probably know what a sense of relief you get to find a unit that you can move into. But the fact is that this housing wasn't secure. And not only that, many people that moved into the buildings did not have any idea the housing was slated for redevelopment. And my understanding is that people who moved in after the redevelopment application are due no compensation. Or as I understand it from the report earlier, maybe they're due two thousand dollars. There's some sort of idea that they would get two thousand dollars. But that is really not an adequate amount to compensate for the total disruption of their lives. Because, and the total disruption of their lives, because the landlord has made a calculation that they want to maximize the profit out of the, out of the property. I actually don't live in East Vancouver anymore, I've moved to Burnaby. And Burnaby is no stranger to tenant dislocation, as I'm sure you know. But Burnaby has made a choice to develop a tenant relocation policy that respects the human right to housing of tenants. And the, my understanding of how Burnaby has developed the relocation program is that the demevicted tenants should not bear the financial burden of the projects. That they should be adequately compensated, so they should have no out-of-pocket expenses associated with their relocation. And I think that should be the prevailing principle when we think about how relocation, how tenants are handled in the case of relocation, because actually they're already paying. Even if you don't have a financial burden associated with having to relocate, you have the stress and anxiety of being relocated against your will already. They shouldn't have a financial burden as well. And I'm not saying Burnaby is perfect by any means. But it's better than what dislocated or displaced tenants get in Vancouver. And so I think it's really a matter of political will and priorities. Housing is a human right. Tenants deserve safety and security. And I understand that you've been provided with the demands of the tenants from Oxford and Templeton, or what they need in this process, and I would encourage you to, to meet what they're, what they're saying they need. I think that it's very reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer, yeah. Okay, so no other questions. We're gonna move to speaker number six, sorry for mispronouncing your name, Mazdak, Gary Benavess? Yeah, please, go ahead.
Thank you council for your time, although maybe I won't thank you for some of your political leanings. My name is Mazdak, I'm a renter in Mount Pleasant. And I didn't come prepared with any statements, but I'm happy that there's been plenty of fodder given us from the developers and city staff that I can just comment on. So firstly, let me just tell you a little bit about my own situation. I live in Mount Pleasant, as I mentioned, and my building is up for sale. And as a renter, that would of course mean a future demeviction in my, in my future, once the land assembly and whatever other things people like to do happen. The difference is me, I am, I'm lucky in that the zip code that I live in, sorry, the postal code that I live under, has been deemed by some of the fantastic system that we have. I am more, I have more worth as a tenant than the tenants at Templeton and Oxford. Purely because of where I live, it means that I'm hypothetically on paper entitled to a right to return at the same rent, rent top-ups when I leave, protections that match Burnaby's. Now, we can just gloss over the fact that the city doesn't really properly enforce these things, or have dedicated staff members to do, to do those things. I, I even though would be facing a demeviction in my future, I'm one of the lucky ones. And the tenants at Templeton and Oxford have very clear demands, and they understand that a mega corporation will have whatever profits that they make throughout their business, it is not going to hurt their bottom line to protect them and support them and have them return to the, the places that would be built. Councilor Frye, you mentioned that the conundrum is between supply and the tenants that already live there. I disagree, the conundrum here is for staff and politicians at, at all levels really, to decide whether it's the profits of corporations that need to be prioritized, or the human, human beings that live in these places. So I, I will just conclude by also saying that I, you know, we, we hear a lot of hemming and hawing about the different numbers that they don't know. And that's really because you don't have a single conversation with a single renter in this city. If you'd like to learn about how to do that, grassroots organizations on shoestring budgets are doing that day in, day out. I, I see some folks have been on our website already. But the, the tenants at Oxford and Templeton deserve better. And it, and this company can make it happen. Templeton deserve better, and it, and this company can make it happen. It's just a matter of whether council and whether city staff would make that happen. And lastly, I'll just note that the city manager, during the Broadway Plan sort of debate, I very specifically remember her mentioning that the council can choose to not pass protections that have been passed under the Broadway Plan on a case-by-case basis. They can sort of arbitrarily decide that some tenants would not get that, and I would have to believe that you would also be empowered to arbitrarily do give protections to tenants. Because if the system is the case that only you are arbitrarily able to not give us protections, then I would have to think about this institution as a whole as illegitimate of representing renters in any way, shape, or form. So with that said, oh, pardon me, thank you for all of your work, but the tenants deserve better, and that's what we heard, what we're here to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for speaking at the council. Thank you. Okay, number seven, Neil Vokey? Thank you, Neil.
Thank you. My name is Neil Vokey. I've been a renter in East Van for 10 years, and moved about four blocks away from the proposed development in 2020. The project I'm speaking to you today will displace my neighbours. It will directly displace 13 families. The replacement townhomes in this proposed development will not be an option for people who live there now, not even close. Market rents for a three-bedroom in the city are around $4,500 right now. $4,500 a month is not even technically affordable on a city councillor's salary. But this development, and the many more to come in the neighbourhood, will also push up rents for the whole area. Cedar Cove is a corner of Grandview Woodland that includes some of the few remaining affordable apartments in our city. Within the pages of the Vancouver Plan, we can see this entire area has a median household income of less than $60,000, which is the lowest income bracket shown in their map. But the Grandview Woodland area plan has zoned the whole area for more six-story market-rate developments like this. This means that thousands of renters who currently live here, who help build and nourish their neighbourhood, are destined to be systematically pushed out. City planners are calling this a growth strategy. But why is growing our city a zero-sum game? Why don't our homes and our place within our community, as renters who already live here, figure into these priorities in their checklists? Some more info about the Grandview Woodland Plan. Passed in 2016, it calls for an equal amount of market and non-market rentals over 25 years. But since 2016, exactly zero non-market units have been completed here. The staff referral report shows this. Meanwhile, hundreds of market rentals and condos are in the works all along East Hastings, Nanaimo, and Broadway corridors in the area. Developments for higher-income earners are coming online quickly, while previously-approved non-market projects, like a co-op on Pender Street, like indigenous housing on Francis Street, sit as empty pits in the ground for years. It echoes what's happened in the Canby Corridor, where the already meagre social housing targets are neglected while housing for wealthy people gets prioritized. I'm just sharing this to underscore the point that the people who need affordable housing have nowhere to go. And here's the thing, sensible policies that can help mitigate the direct displacement already exist within the Broadway Plan, and as you've heard, in the city of Burnaby. And what the tenants hear, this is all that they're asking for. So I'm here to support their collective demands of the tenants, which is to say, at the very least, they should be supported to stay in their community, in their schools, and to move back with stabilized rents in the new building when it's finished. Some people say, "If you can't pay your workers a fair wage, you don't deserve to run a business." Well, how about this? If you can't provide dignified, affordable homes for people you're planning to displace, you shouldn't be allowed to build. You shouldn't be allowed to come into our communities and evict people for profit. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. You do have one more question from Counselor Fry. Please go ahead, Counselor.
Neil, thanks for your, your points, and also, similar to Mazdak's points and stuff, and I just sort of wanna kind of wrap a question into both of what you were kind of touching on, and that's the Broadway Plan tenant protections, the Burnaby tenant protections, and, and you live in the immediate area and stuff. So I think one of the things, and one of the big challenges with all of this, and I totally hear everything you're saying, and, you know, what we struggle with is the fact that we don't have public housing being built, and we're reliant on the private market developers and stuff to, to deliver on this kind of stuff because we just can't. And that's what reflects a lot of these delays in getting it built, because that's how things happen, you know? The pit in the ground at Francis Street is waiting for funding. So I guess what we, what, what does allow some of those robust protections that we're contemplating in the Broadway Plan, that haven't actually happened yet, but that are contemplated in it, is significantly more height, right? So not replacing a three-story walk-up with a six-story building, but replacing it with like a 20-story building or something of that nature. Do you think, and recognizing that this can't really be applied to this project because it's already too far gone along, and this is a reactive conversation, not a proactive conversation, but would that be sort of agreeable if we went that way with, in, in the sort of newly-branded Cedar Cove neighbourhood?
Well, yeah, I, I can't speak for the whole neighbourhood, but personally, I don't care if it's 100 stories tall. I care about how much it costs to live there, and I care about whether people can live meaningful, dignified lives there. I'll just say this about the, the current building. There's been a lot of hot air thrown around about missing middle housing and infill housing and all this stuff. That's right there. That's what you're tearing down.
Totally agree. Totally agree. Yeah. Okay, thanks, Neil.
Thanks.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fry. Number eight on the list, Kathleen Patricia McClure. Thank you, Kathleen.
Hello. I'm a little older than most of the speakers here, and I've been lucky enough to escape some of the travails they've had as young people raising families. As an older person, I really enjoy and love living in this neighbourhood. I've lived in it for over a decade, and I'm really pleased to be able to speak to you about the rezoning application for a six-story apartment building at Templeton and Oxford. We enjoy in that area stunning views of the North Shore Mountains, whether on foot or driving through the area, which I will describe as a micro-neighbourhood. It's part of the Cedar Cove section of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, which I have read in full. And I am deeply dismayed by this rezoning application and the planned demolition of two older structures, just recently renovated in 2018, and on behalf of the 25 residents, families, and young people who are to be demoevicted from their homes. This application represents a truly unsightly intrusion into our unique neighbourhood, and it should be denied. Firstly, the six-story, architecturally stark, six-story building will tower over surrounding apartment, condo, and townhouse buildings unlikely to be torn down in coming years. I would project decades. This notion of having a six-story building stuck in the middle of a neighbourhood is, in my opinion, unrealistic and should be revisited by city planners and community planners. I'm struck by this notion of a pace of change policy. We don't need a change of pace in our unique neighbourhood. We do not need a six-story building. Imagine a structure this intrusive going up in your neighbourhoods, and think about the emotional and financial costs of your neighbours who are being demoevicted. This is most unsettling to me. This application is being made by West Vancouver builders and investors. Rents are very likely to be high, as is the trend across Canada. The most striking failure of this potential cash grab is that it only proposes 16 parking spots for residents of a 36-unit building with two spots reserved for guests. This is in a neighbourhood where night-time parking is already at a premium on both sides of local streets and surrounding blocks. I know developers get a break because of nearby transit stops, but I propose that this is unreasonable. Streets can't go vertical to accommodate increased parking demand, and I somewhat shudder to think of what will happen in 10, 20, 30 years. What will the situation be if we build six-story structures in the Cedar Cove neighbourhood? Finally, I'd like to defer to Larry Beasley, who is a planning professor at UBC. In his 2019 publication, Vancouverism, he staged on page 99, "Urban design is about both private and public interests. This council must represent as much as possible public interest. The private side, of course, takes care of itself, and public interests for design are just left out, and all too often, the public aspirations for the design are left, as he says, a crapshoot." This is what's happening in this situation.
Sorry, Kathleen, you are at time right now. Sorry about that.
I will just conclude by saying, I believe any future construction in this neighbourhood should feature buildings no higher than four stories.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you for speaking at the council. Okay, so the next speaker is Anna Alger. Is Anna here in the chamber? Thank you, Anna, please go ahead.
Hi, council and staff. My name is Anna Alger. I'm a renter living along the Fairview Shaughnessy border, just south of the Broadway Plan area. I'm here to speak in support of the demands submitted by the current residents at Oxford and Templeton. As you know, seven out of 13 units do not even qualify for the city's tenant protection policy because tenants moved in after the deadline to qualify, but well before the redevelopment signs went up. These tenants did not realise they would be facing eviction so soon. Some families have already been demoevicted before, and the tenants will not be able to afford to move into the new townhouses, even at 20% discounted market rents, which are currently around $4,500 for a three-bedroom. I support the tenants' demands that all current residents qualify for tenant protections and that all tenants qualify for a right to return to the new development at the same rent that they pay now. The tenants also require rent top-ups during construction in order to stabilise their rents, similar to the protections which tenants along the Broadway Plan will receive. The aforementioned Broadway Plan tenant protections need to be extended citywide. Having a stable rental housing situation has allowed me to build a community in Vancouver, engage in work that I'm passionate about, garden in my local community, and live in a walkable and transit-friendly area. The Oxford and Templeton tenants require this same stability in order to continue to enrich their lives and the lives of their neighbours and community members. It's important for residents to be supported to stay in their communities, to strengthen existing communities, and so that current residents can make decisions about their lives on their own terms. Developers and landlords can afford to support current residents to stay in our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anna. Number 10 on the list, Lillian Deeb. Hi, Lillian, you have five minutes? Please go ahead.
Thanks, hi, everyone. Oh, I don't know why this is moving. Hi, my name is Lillian Deeb. I am a renter in Vancouver. I live in Mount Pleasant right now, but for five of the seven years I lived in Vancouver, I lived about a 10-minute walk from this, from, from this location. So when I first heard that this, that this was up for, that this, that these two buildings would be demoevicted, demolished, it seemed very, my, my gut reaction was, wow, this is irresponsible. Especially, I know a few councillors have asked questions about the redesign in 2018. We know that everyone who lived there prior to 2018, prior to these renovations, were turned out, and a lot of them had to leave the city, not just the neighbourhood. But the ad, you know, the first thing on the ad that was sent to council, that Rebecca sent to council was, says, the first thing it says is, "Extensive renovations." You know, it says, "Fully renovated kitchens with all-new stainless steel appliances, including gas stoves and dishwashers. Replacement of all kitchen and bathroom plumbing and fixtures, including pipes, faucets, diverters, sinks, and toilets. New roofs, brand-new electrical, condo-level interiors." This is not something that should be demolished within five years of basically remaking the inside of these buildings. It doesn't make any sense. It strikes me as extremely irresponsible and wasteful, and also, and also just, if we're going to do this, why not give folks the same kind of protections as those under the Broadway Plan? While I lived in this neighbourhood, I saw huge changes to the main Hastings bus that goes from downtown to SFU. This is an extremely important line that went from being the 135, being, being express in only, in only Vancouver, and then not express in Burnaby, to then becoming an express bus, to then having the additions for, from it going from the 135 to then the, the 95, and now the R5, right? There have been huge changes to this corridor. So why aren't these tenants given the same protections, given that there are changes, that there are changes going on in Broadway? It doesn't make any sense. It struck me, it strikes me as almost dishonest to rent to someone knowing that this building was about, is gonna get demolished. I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm struggling with this word. It's getting demolished and not telling them, especially given that that was as recent as December 2021, I hear. That's not, that, if, I moved into my place in Mount Pleasant in September 2021, if I was, if I wasn't told that it was, it was getting demolished, I would feel cheated, you know? I would have made different decisions, especially given the context that you've all heard, that many of these tenants who do not get any protections came from, came from places that were demolished. They absolutely would have made different decisions. So I think, so as the tenants, I just want to reiterate that every one of these tenants should have protections, and I think that, that I, I'm here to just support, to support their demands. So they should all fall under the TRPP, and they should all get the protections available to Broadway folks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Lillian. Number 11 on the speakers list, Maria Guiles. Maria, you have five minutes? Please go ahead.
Thank you. I am opposed to the proposed development and in support of the tenants' demands. I'm not opposed to density or building heights. If what was being proposed here was a 20 or 100, like Neil said, story building with 100% shelter rate or rents affordable to a single parent making minimum wage, I'd be the project's biggest cheerleader. If more projects were being proposed like that in Vancouver, I'd get Yimby tattooed on my knuckles. But that's not what's being offered here, is it? It so rarely is. It makes me physically ill to hear constant discussion of an economic case for not displacing people. God forbid the esteemed developer not gouge Vancouverites as much as their peers. That would be awful. As someone who recently got demoevicted a few months ago, I can tell you, the rental market is bleak. My rent went up 40% when I moved. That's four-zero, 40%. We've seen two land-assembly signs go up across the street since we moved into our home. And so now the question is, how much will it go up next time? When you vote to displace these tenants and their families, will they be able to afford the next rent increase? And what if they can't? Then what? Well, if they were savvy enough to have applied to the BC housing to the B C Housing Registry five years ago and have been calling them every six months to keep their file up to date, pro tip, then they might get offered a subsidized unit. And if not, well, say it with me, get a roommate. That's right. Even if you're a single parent with a young child, you can share your bathroom with a stranger. Why not? You'll be fine. Even though some of us here may not have the lived experience of housing insecurity, we are all united by one thing, and that is the love of affordable housing. We all love it, right? We all said that in our campaigns, didn't we? We love affordable housing, and we want to build more of it, always. And we are building more of it. So many affordable units are generously set at a ten percent below-market rate because, as we all know, if it's affordable to somebody, that's what I call affordable. That is, of course, a reference to former councillor Raymond Louis. Good luck to him and his troubles these days. And at least he has his legacy, am I right? It's interesting that these tenants already live in affordable housing, though. And it's not just ten percent below-market rate. Seems like nobody cares about affordable housing when people already live inside affordable housing. Where is the support for existing affordable housing that people already live in and rely on? Well, do I have an opportunity for you folks today? You can stand with these tenants and their demands, give them the same protections as the Broadway Plan, let them return at the same rent. And sorry, and you can oppose this motion and not evict them. So, do we really love affordable housing? How about you show us? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Thank you for speaking to the council. Number twelve on the list, Jeff Dodd. Is Jeff in the chamber or on the line? Okay, so Jeff is not, we're gonna go back to the list later. Number thirteen on the list, David Bowie. Hi, David. You have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm David Bowie. I'm the R B C Assistant Conductor of the Vancouver Symphony Orchestra, and I'm currently living in twenty-one eighty-five Oxford Street. I'm speaking on behalf of my partner Marie and me. I just moved to Vancouver in April last year, 2022. And since I just moved here recently, I'm not eligible for relocation benefits under the Tenant Relocation Plan. And as a newcomer, I notice the prices in Vancouver are unexpectedly high. In comparison to Berlin, Germany, where I'm from, my rent has more than doubled. There's the rule of thumb that one should spend around a third of one's salary on rent, but here, it's around sixty-five percent of my salary as a full-time employee. And before my girlfriend Marie joined me in November, I literally lived from paycheck to paycheck. Unforeseen expenses would have been impossible for me to overcome and still are. I can't replace things, and leisure activities are rarely done. It's pretty much surviving and not living. And as a full-time worker, I should not rely on other people coming from another country, from Germany, to support me. At the current situation, it's impossible for us to build a new life in Vancouver. And being rezoned without proper rights and financial support could mean a quick end to our period of life in Vancouver. Even the city of Vancouver has indirectly admitted the unbearable costs by voting to end living wage pay for its workers. If even the city of Vancouver is unable to pay living wages, the city of Vancouver should at least keep costs and rent as low and as steady as possible. And at this point, I would like to say hi to the mayor, Ken Sim. I met him recently at the gala of the Vancouver Symphony Orchestra, and he welcomed me to Vancouver, and I was hoping that I'm staying here for a longer period of time. So let's grant him his wish and my wish to actually stay here. And therefore, I would like to repeat the demands of my previous speakers again. We, the current tenants of Oxford Street and North Templeton Drive, demand, in addition to the existing tenant relocation protection, that first, all current residents be included in the current and proposed protection. Second, in addition to the right of first refusal for the new building, we be allowed to return to similar units at our current rental rates. Third, we be giving the option to either a lump-sum payout or the option of rental top-ups during the relocation phase. And four, we be temporarily rehoused within our community. We will not tolerate being ripped out of the relationship and community we chose and actively participate in. This is of utmost importance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Thank you. The next one on the list is Oliver Tennant. Is Oliver here on the line or in person?
Hi, yeah, I'm just on the line here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Please go ahead, Oliver.
Hi, great, yeah, thanks. Hi, Mayor Council. My name is Oliver Tennant. Pronouns are he/him. I actually just live on the other side of Hastings Street, a few blocks up, Victoria. I'm a renter here and have rented for quite a few years in East End and quite involved in the community, especially at Britannia Community Centre. And I wanted to call in this evening just to let you know of my support of this project. I'm a young professional. My partner and I live here, planning on starting a family and growing our family within this neighborhood. And I think the growth of rental housing in this neighborhood is incredibly important. We need to welcome people in this neighborhood, and there's currently just no availability of it. My partner and I have many friends, coworkers, other members of our communities that live elsewhere that want to be in this neighborhood and are already invested in this neighborhood through volunteering and otherwise that want to move here. But, you know, they'll go to a showing, and there'll be thirty, forty people there, and, you know, they'll have no chance to find a rental. And I just think having the opportunity for new rental that's available in this neighborhood is really important because frankly, there's just nothing available. I know there's been lots of talks about Craigslist and all this kind of stuff earlier, which is, I totally get that. And really, I see myself privileged to be a renter in this neighborhood because of how hard it is. But, yeah, I honestly just wanted to call in, representing myself, but also my friends that want to move to the neighborhood, saying my support for this rental project because, yeah, frankly, there's just none available out here. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting me speak this evening. And I hope it gets approved.
Thank you, Oliver. Next one on the list, Sydney Ball. Is Sydney in the chamber? Sydney, you have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Ooh, thank you. I'd like to say that I oppose this project. Reasons being that things that I've honestly said at this council here or on the phone for way too many times over too many years and have never been listened to or prioritized. So the tenants have already noted that this building went through a rent eviction before they were tenants in 2018. And how many communities is this council going to permit to be ripped away before we're going to put in stronger protections? Is there, there seems to be some magic number of one hundred and fifty more market rentals before we actually allow the opportunity to protect people? That's not, that's not acceptable. In that time, how many children in this building will have to be taken away from the schools and the communities that they're part of? Or how many people will lose some relationships or have to move far away from their families? These affordable rentals were already lost in 2018 because of heedless inaction by the city government and the provincial government on tenant protections. So now we will lose these rentals for good as moderately affordable rentals. There's no building out of a crisis if every single eviction, every single move that's by choice means that one more unit will start renting out at market rate. I don't know if you folks in the room check Craigslist as much as a worried tenant. We check Craigslist pretty often. And so it was not surprising to see the C M H C numbers that confirmed that rent went up twenty percent in the last year. Twenty percent in a year. So that's the twenty percent that's going to be taken off market rent for the tenants that are offered right of first refusal. And what about the extra twenty percent that's going to incur while that building gets built or more? Rent keep going up. That twenty percent off doesn't mean anything to people that are already paying, as David said, sixty-five percent of their wage towards rental. It's not useful. The rents will continue to rise, and it'll continue to rise while the building is erected. So it only takes a year to look into Craigslist and see that you have less freedoms to live in the neighborhood, less freedoms to make additions to your family, maybe less freedoms to leave an abusive partner, less freedoms that you can hang on to your relationships and your communities if you were to get evicted. The cost burden of development is completely on tenants, and the extra money, the extra twenty or forty percent or how much more we'll be paying is directly taken out of their futures and their retirements and their children's futures. Those are the people that pay the burden. I've said this a million times, but vacancy control and protections for dem- evicted tenants would do a lot to change this, as well as obviously investing in public housing, which needs to be prioritized. Rather than hearing a lot about enabling tenants to stay and keeping people from becoming homeless, I see a lot of conversations surrounding blaming people who are already made most vulnerable and have nowhere to go. Vancouver is a hostile place to tenants, and it's at the behest of development profits. That's all.
Thank you, Sydney. Number sixteen on the list, Matthew Wignus. Is Matthew here in the chamber or on the line? No, okay. Yeah, please. No, okay. We're gonna come back to the list, speak to you later, Matthew. Number seventeen on the list, Gary Hawkeridge. Is Gary here on the line?
Yes, I am.
Please go ahead, Gary. You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much for this opportunity. Now, my name is Gary Hawkeridge, and I live one-half block north on the opposite side of the street on Templeton, from where this new complex is proposed. My issue is parking. My wife and I moved into our residence in nineteen ninety-four, and at that time, there was lots of parking. There wasn't too many cars on the street. And so when you had visitors or company come over, they could park nearby, out in front of your unit. But now, twenty-nine years later, there isn't so much parking. It's already pretty cramped, even day and night. So I oppose the parking in this complex. Thirty-six suites allowing sixteen parking spots. That is actually a point four of a parking spot per unit. I find this totally unrealistic. Say, for instance, two adults moving into a unit, both needing a car to get to work. So how do they do that? How do they decide who parks in this point four of a parking spot? Let the debate begin. Like I say, we live at twenty-two twenty-two Cambridge Street. We have forty-four suites in the building, and there are forty-nine parking spots, two for visitors, two allotted for bicycle parking, and one for a handicap parking. This allows, and is forty-four allotted for residents or owners to park their vehicles. That's one point zero parking spot per suite. Also, each parking spot is allowed a wall-mounted bike rack for the people, if they have bikes, they can park them there or in those two allotted parking spots. Now, in this new complex, I see that they're wanting to allow seventy-one bike spaces. That's two bikes per unit. Now, sure, I believe and I agree with the Green Initiative. Let's have more options, people using alternate transportation. But really, a person living and working in Stevesden is gonna ride a bike or perhaps in North Vancouver in the wintertime? Not really. We know that in the city, parking is already chaotic. And in multifamily areas, which this is, lots of condos and apartments, it's totally horrible to find a parking spot. We see by law enforcement officers around here all the time checking for people parking close to a fire hydrant or a stop sign in a corner. That's where they have to park to find a spot. And with this development, it's only gonna get worse. And then how is a person in this environment supposed to park close to their home or to their house if they have to park outside on the street? My suggestion was this developer return and rethink the vehicle parking spaces and perhaps consider more wall-mounted bike spaces to have more car parking spots. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you for speaking at the council. Number eighteen on the list, Joshua Gardner. Is Joshua on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Joshua. Please go ahead. You have five minutes.
Great. Thank you, honorable council members. My name is Joshua Gardner. I'm a resident of Vancouver at two-one-six-five Oxford Street. So, in fact, the same building as Ashley Fisher, and I've lived there for the last ten years under similar living circumstances to the tenants of Templeton and two-one-eight-five Oxford. I strongly oppose this development proposal, and I share the concerns of all of the residents of the area who've expressed their opinions so eloquently. Actually, in fact, Rebecca is my ex-wife and the mother of my daughter. And I just want to say thank you for her incredible leadership on this issue. I'm very strongly opposed to this redevelopment plan, and I would urge council to reject this development plan and also to enhance tenant protections in the Grand View Woodland neighborhood. I don't support any aspect of this project. I'm also incredibly surprised to discover that no below-market housing has been built under the Grand View Woodland Development Plan. But it seems shocking to me for a city that professes to care so much about its residents to see a lack of care evidenced in this way. I'm not opposed to development. I am opposed to development that seems irresponsible or maybe we might even use a stronger word, callous. This project seems irresponsible to me, and it seems ill-considered. I could list a number of reasons, and I will try to within my time limit of why I'm opposed. But one of the most important things that I want council to understand is that tenants are people, and development plans affect people. And one of the people who will be negatively affected by this redevelopment will be my daughter. I think it's very important to know that. This will damage my daughter's sense of security and safety in her housing. So if council votes to approve this project, just know that you are voting to damage my daughter's sense of safety. And I hope you feel okay about making that vote. I don't believe that the P R P protections in the Grand View Woodland area are strong enough. We've heard that additional work is necessary, an additional cost is necessary, if I understand correctly, to provide the protections to Grand View Woodland. Uh, to Grandview Woodland residents that equal those in the Broadway corridor. Please help me understand why that work hasn't been done. Um, because otherwise, it sounds to me like tenants in this area are being offered lesser protections. Because people don't want to pay the cost. Uh, that seems to me like a bad joke. Um, I'm not laughing. I don't think any of the tenants in this neighborhood are laughing. I'm really concerned about the effects that this redevelopment will have on the people I care about. Their lives will be quantifiably damaged by this renovation. Uh, I think that this development project damages the character of this neighborhood as a whole. I've lived in this neighborhood for ten years. I moved to this neighborhood on purpose because I like the character of this neighborhood and I like the density of this neighborhood. I don't want to see it changed in this way. That doesn't mean that I don't want to see it changed, but I want to see it developed in a way. That respects the public interest and allows the people in this neighborhood to continue. Their lives with a sense of security, with a sense of safety in their housing. And to be included in decisions made about the place where they live. Uh, you know, we've heard about parking, um, as a person who lives on this block, parking is incredibly precious and I mean it. Seems like a small thing, but it's not, you know, I have to consider if I stay out too late, will I even be able to park close to my own home? I don't know. Um, I, I'm not opposed to alternative methods of transport, but. My own circumstances don't make that easy or achievable and I think it's easy on paper to say. Just find an alternate method of transporting, give up your car and, you know, that's academically a wonderful thing to say, but we don't all live in ivory towers that let us do that. Is this project an appropriate use of funds and resources? We've heard that these buildings were recently renovated. Why are they being considered for demolition after only a few years? We've heard a story about how a bunch of grievous deficiencies, uh, were remedied and now these buildings are quote-unquote livable as is. Which suggests to me, is there some greater standard that needs to be met for a building to be exempt from the plan?
Sorry, Joshua, you are at time right now. Sorry, Joshua.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you so much.
By saying that, that I oppose this project and I urge you to oppose it too.
Thank you, Joshua. Thank you. Uh, the next one on the list, number nineteen, Lindsay Roy. Is Lindsay on the line? No, Lindsay's not. Okay, we're gonna come back to Lindsay later. Uh, number twenty on the list, Mary Ann Thodas. Is Mary Ann here in person? Okay, hi, Mary Ann.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Mary Ann Thodas and I'm a current renter at two one eight five Oxford Street in unit two oh four. I'm not currently protected under the TRP. I moved in, uh, January first, two thousand and twenty. And the application went through, uh, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So I missed the cutoff by twenty days and I'm not covered under the TRPP. I've been a working artist in Vancouver for seven years now and each year it seems harder and harder to find affordable places to live. With very limited subsidized housing, Hastings Sunrise has been the last remaining neighborhood in this city that I can afford. Redeveloping this neighborhood and introducing high-cost apartments will push lower-income earners such as artists like myself out of the city for good. I have always found the notion of completely redeveloping a city very confusing. Even if you just view the people speaking tonight as numbers to the system that you are creating, wouldn't you see us as numbers that hold value? For instance, pushing out young artists also pushes out the events that we curate and the pieces that we display. Though many of us speaking tonight can't afford a four thousand five hundred dollar a month apartment. We offer this, uh, we offer the city value, we offer value to the city that I don't think should be quickly overlooked. Vancouver is our home. What we are asking for tonight is the ability to work and be a part of this city. This is why we, the current tenants of two one eight, two one eight five Oxford Street and one oh three, one eleven North Templeton Drive, demand the following. In addition to the existing tenant relocation protection in place, we demand that all current residents be included in the current and proposed protections. That in addition to the right of refusal, first refusal for the new building, we will all be allowed to return to a similar units at our current rental rates. That we be given the option of either a lump sum payout or the option of rental top-ups during the relocation phase. That we be temporarily rehoused within our community and we will not tolerate being ripped out of the relationships and communities we, community we choose and actively participate in. This is of the utmost importance to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next one on the list is, uh, Peter Doughty? Oh, sorry.
Hello?
Hey, so, sorry, Peter. So just give us one second. So we need to count if we have enough quorum. Six. Okay, okay. Hey, Peter, please go ahead. You have five minutes.
Uh, hi, City Council. Uh, my name is Peter Doughty and I'm a resident of Vancouver. And I'm speaking today about the proposed rezoning at North Templeton Drive and Oxford Street. There are a lot of things to like about this proposal. It provides housing to a city that desperately needs it. It doesn't impose onerous parking minimums. This helps us achieve big move two. This helps us achieve our environmental goals. It's also good to see a purpose-built rental that's exempt from a community amenity contribution. Uh, these discourage housing, these keep rents high and they ultimately end up imposing a cost that's borne mostly by renters. However, this proposal could also be a lot better. It's a net gain of twenty-three units and it displaces thirteen tenants to do so. But there are many low-density housing areas near the proposed site, both within and outside of the Grandview Woodlands plan. And building there would displace far fewer tenants and achieve a greater gain of housing for a similar land cost. Is getting less for more the right approach to a housing crisis? Uh, it was also discouraging to see that there were setbacks incorporated into the design to help it blend into the area. Uh, this reduces the amount of housing we get. Are aesthetic concerns really that important during a housing crisis? Ultimately, the city is sitting on a massive reserve of low-density housing, close to transit and amenities in that area and we should be using this asset to get out of this housing crisis. But instead, we tear down apartments to build slightly larger apartments and we tear down houses to build slightly more garish houses. I know that this proposal was submitted during the last council and also council and staff cannot direct an applicant to build this particular building here or in that way. And I can't really weigh the interests of those who this proposal will house against those who will be displaced by it. But I really have to ask why these interests are intention to begin with. So I really hope that the response to this proposal, uh, makes council and staff think hard about how to reform zoning. Reform the plan and change staff direction so that we stop building density on top of density. Sacrificing housing for aesthetics and maximizing the displacement that we cause. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you for speaking at the council. The next one on the list, Laura Sennis. Is Laura here on the line? Okay, Laura's here in person. Hi, Laura. Hi, you have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Laura Sennis. As a settler on the unceded and stolen land of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh nations. It is my responsibility to be very conscious of my movements and impacts on this land. With that, I believe it is my responsibility to advocate for a more equitable society. As someone who grew up in subsidized rental housing in Champlain Heights in southeast Vancouver. I'm passionate about all levels of government, investing in communities by creating and maintaining affordable housing. I'm here today to advocate for affordable rental housing in the development proposed at Templeton and Oxford. The proposed development in its current form misses the mark on providing affordable rental housing, which is deeply concerning and infuriating. I currently reside one block away from the proposed development. There are plenty of benefits living in this neighborhood. It offers services, grocery stores, parks, transportation options, schools. All pieces that create a thriving community. There is real pride walking in a neighborhood where you see Kai at Templeton Market doling out treats to hungry dogs. Listening to Geronimo's update on advocating for washrooms in a local park. Or running into Teresa on the Wall Street Community Garden. My neighbors at Templeton and Oxford add to this vibrant and diverse community. And it will be a great loss if they are forced to leave due to the unaffordability of this development. Creating more rental housing is definitely something that I support. But only if it includes affordable rental housing. I believe that housing is a right. Our society cannot solely cater to people with higher household incomes. And this is exactly what I see happening with this proposed development. I believe as elected officials to the city of Vancouver. You have the responsibility to secure, maintain and create affordable housing, especially more affordable rental housing. Do not let this development proposal go through without a commitment of affordable, non-market rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. So the next one on the list is Esteban Gonzalez. Is Esteban on the line? Okay. Left the building, okay. Okay, the next one on the list is Joanna Shinet. Is Joanna here in the, on the line?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Joanna. Here, you'll have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Hello, thank you for, um, having us speak, council. Um, I'm an owner and I live in the twenty-two hundred block of Oxford, on Oxford Street. And I oppose this proposal. Um, not only do I defend the rights of the renters who are being displaced to have affordable housing, but. I am thinking about our neighborhood in general. It is a wonderful balance. All kinds of people live here, including renters, single parents with children, elders and poor folks. We have a lot of Aboriginal, um, mothers, um, groups that use the parks, use the services. And everybody is in a good balance here. I've looked at the builders' proposals and there's no plan to have affordable units within the new building. Ours is one of the new, of the few neighborhoods in the city which have been left without being completely gentrified. Although council speaks about the need to create more housing, if council does not prioritize affordable housing. We will drive out diversity from this city. Additionally, if you cast out the renters in my relatively affordable neighborhood, where does council expect these people to go? Also, how will an influx of wealthier people affect my neighborhood's pretty perfect, perfect balance? I'm concerned that it's short-sighted for council to approve buildings like these without ensuring that the working class and poor renters. Can continue to live in this wonderful neighborhood. We do not want this city to allow developers to erode diversity in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanna. Thank you for speaking to council. Uh, I think this conclude the last speakers on our list. So I think, uh, the clerk just informed me that I don't need to go back to the first, but we're gonna instead call three times for the script. Okay, so if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free. One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on live stream.
Chair, I have a point of procedure if I might.
Yes, please go ahead.
Are we not required to call back through the list for speakers that did not respond to their turn?
Can you please answer this question?
Yes, I'm happy to clarify. We do that for council and standing committee meetings for, but for public hearings, the process is calling the three times. So in that case, if anybody did happen to miss their time. Um, in fact, we have speaker nineteen, we know, waiting on the phone for this first call and they will come forward.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. It's helpful for the public too. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, clerk. So that's the fir-, uh, first time, so I'm gonna do the second time. Is there anyone on the, on the phone right now?
I am on the phone right now.
Okay, please go ahead. You are Lindsay, right?
Yes.
Okay, so Lindsay, I think you have a delegate for four people. Is that right?
Uh, well, I am with, I am with the renters that have already spoken with VCU, representing VCU and renters displaced. I don't really know what you're asking me. I have a delegate. I'm not sure of them.
Okay, how many people in your delegate? Can you clarify that?
I'm not sure what you mean, delegate.
Okay, just by yourself, I guess, right?
I'm a renter speaking with, speaking out as a member of the Vancouver Tenants Union and as a displaced renter. Um, who, I'm basically coming to give you the, uh, TRP promises of the past. Um, it was about almost exactly two years ago that I spoke to council, um, in the same position that Rebecca's in and has my house. That I'd been in for about three and a half years was being rezoned. And, uh, that's, that's what I'm here for. So, I'll be good to go.
Yeah, please go ahead, Lindsay. Yeah, you have five minutes.
Perfect. Um, thank you for hearing, uh, from the people that have spoken tonight and all the speakers that have, um, shared with council tonight. And I think it's so important and in this housing plan and housing profit and housing, all of it. You know, renters' voices are really, um, token, tokenized, I find. Um, like we're talking about plans and consultations that happened with a very small group of people. What, uh, five to ten years ago, like twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, um, and, uh, decisions being made on that. We're also looking at data around rentals and, and, and costs that is that ancient as well and that is, uh, concerning. And then also we see that the actual connection to, you know, with the person that's putting this application through. Uh, doesn't have a scope of the people just being displaced and, uh. You know, that's their responsibility at this stage to have that kind of handled. So it's all a little, um, telling, I think. And so basically I, you know, I listened to the meeting yesterday and I heard council be cautious and thoughtful and I heard. The hard work that had gone into the, uh, I don't remember the name of it, but, um, the, all the numbers with the tax scheme. And, you know, putting that together and pulling out, it's good work by the sounds of it. I couldn't follow a lot of it, but like, I just want to bring that up again because I heard. A lot of, um, like gratitude and work and commitment and, and cautiousness and conscientiousness. Um, and care for, you know, consultation with the people being affected, the small businesses, for example. And I would just like to ask, why not with us? Like, where is the caution? You're powering through rezonings and, um, pandering to developers who are property pirates profiting. They do not care about renters and, um, putting the ball in their court. And expecting them to have any measure of protection or consideration for anything other than the profit that they're making. At any expense, at the expense of renters like myself and, um, you know, families and neighborhoods and environmental protections and all of it. It's, uh, it's shameful, really, and it's up to you, the council members, to enact the policy that they've put in place and not. Pass the buck or think that somebody else is gonna take care of the, you know, people that you have said that you'll, you'll represent and that the policy has, uh, been designed to represent. But, um, I, I, I don't know about that, to be honest, because there isn't really any enactment built into the policy and that was the problem with, with what happened in my case where. I did not have any protection and I was legally evicted, just classic demoviction. Um, no relocation assistance and I was only able to find temporary housing in a house that is riddled with mold. So much so that I literally can't be inside for more than a few minutes or I will have like major respiratory issues. I am currently living on the porch. Um, and I will be homeless in about three weeks, um, because there is no housing for, particularly for people like me who I am currently on disability. The, uh, assessment of. The, uh, assessment of whatever affordability is, I mean, I don't understand how we've landed on the number that we landed on is under, uh, like eight hundred thousand dollars. An insane amount of money. Like even when I was a working person, I worked for the Vancouver School Board, I worked for the Vancouver Coastal Health and Healthcare. I made like half as much a month that, you know, than that. And so that's not a normal income. When we talk about affordability, we need to actually look at the, like what people are making in, in their area or in the city and it's not that much. And so, um, you know, when I'm saying that there's almost, I've called places that say they have shelter rates and there's, it's a studio for like eleven hundred dollars. Well, on disability, you get fourteen hundred dollars a month. So tell me how that, you know, pans out. Um, there's just so much to say and I'm so, um, I really hope that you guys don't pass this. It's, it's a nightmare out here, honestly. Um, my life has been completely railroaded for the last two years, directly as a result of the rezoning on my house and being displaced from the house that I had lived in with four other, uh, people, peers my age and the other, uh, there was twenty-seven renters in total that were displaced by forum development, um, that built, I believe it's estimated fifty-six million dollars worth of townhouses, um, no rent, no replacement.
Sorry, Lindsay, you are at time right now?
First return.
Sorry, Lindsay, you are at time, so I already gave you some extra seconds. But you do have one question from councillor Kerbyon?
Mm-hmm. Hi, Kerbyon.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, you, you do have any question, uh, Lindsay. So, thank you for speaking to the council. Uh, I think we do have another speaker on the line. So, can you state your name, speaker?
Hello.
Hi, can you speak your name?
Uh, my name is Luca Sekafian. I, um, am opposed to the project and I live in the neighborhood just a few blocks east. Um, I just wanted to say first of all that I'm concerned that council doesn't exactly have accurate information since the representative of the owner said tenants, no, there's no tenants more than two years, but we heard from a tenant who's been there three and a half years with her daughter. So I'm a little bit concerned about the lack of information, but most importantly, um, this kind of uh, rezoning just is continuously displacing people from the neighborhood, as everybody's already said. Um, at the very least, the relocation, um, policy should offer the tenants the same rent they had before or maybe the same rent with the minimum increases. Um, because I'm pretty certain that's why people don't come back is because twenty percent off of market rent, nobody can afford that. Um, and we're not talking like people who don't work full-time, like a lot of these folks work full-time or on salaries and still can't afford to even relocate. So if council keeps approving projects like this, um, we're gonna lose working-class people across the city of all kinds, not just artists. It's gonna be everyone and there'll be no city left for people to live in. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking to council. Uh, you have no questions, so I'm gonna call the second time. If there are any speakers from this item, uh, who wish to speak to council, uh, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code, one six, uh, one zero six one four four five, before the close of the speakers list. The phone, phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So do we have any other speakers on the list? On, on the phone? No? Okay. The third time, if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Do we have any speakers?
No.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So there's no speakers, so I suggest we take five minutes recess. We're gonna be reconvened in eight forty PM. Thank you, everyone. Gonna, we have call room, do we? Okay, perfect. We're gonna continue our meeting. Uh, so clerk, do we have any other speakers on the line? Okay. Hello, speaker, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I'm just upstairs.
Okay, can you state, can you state your name first?
Uh, my name is Debbie Goslin. And I just wanna say that I strenuously oppose this.
Sorry, Debbie, I have to ask you, sorry, Debbie, I have to ask you if you are resident of Vancouver or not?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
I, I live in Hastings Sunrise and the continual gentrification of this neighborhood is disgusting. Uh, the, the gentrification of the neighborhood is alarming. I, um, have seen on my side of Hastings Sunrise, four buildings in the last two or three years go up. I do not want gentrification happening to these nice folks or any more people in Hastings Sunrise and all of Vancouver. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking at council. And clerk, do you have any other speakers on the list? On the phone?
I'm just checking. And no, we have no other speakers on the phone. I do not see any coming forward.
Okay, thank you. So I think as few or no public comments were received on this item after five PM today, uh, I suggest now we close the receipt of the public comments and move on to the hearing closing comments, asking further question of staff or to make a decision. Does applicant have any closing comments?
Uh, thank you, acting mayor, um, and council. Um, I just wanted to follow up on a few comments that came up during the public, uh, uh, the, the public speakers list as well as, uh, just to give you guys some, um, some ideas as to our approach to this project. Um, when we're designing this building, we're quite aware of, of, of the townhouse units there and, and as a form of development, we quite like townhouses. They're very walkable. You access them at grade, um, and I, we feel them very compatible to, to family living. So essentially our approach to this building, rather than thinking of it as a six-story apartment building, um, we, we thought of it more as a four-story apartment building on top of, uh, two-story townhouses. So you'll notice that, that the building itself, the entire ground level is actually ground, ground level access townhouses, um, and, and that, that are fully accessible through, to the parking, uh, below. Um, there are thirteen existing, uh, total units in the, on the two properties, five of which are townhouses. I wanted to point out that, uh, our proposal includes, includes thirteen family units and eight of which are two-story townhouses. So, um, uh, the ratio of, of, of adding back to, to, to these losses, the same as the total ratio of the total loss to total units. Um, so we're quite, quite significantly increasing the number of family units on the, on the two sites. Um, I wanted to point out that the two existing buildings on site are not accessible units. Um, it's, it's a walk-up apartment building and there are stairs required to get up to the townhouse units. Um, all units, including the townhouse units in, in, in the proposed development are fully accessible and adaptable for, for people with, uh, mobility issues, um, which also allows people to age in place. Um, I also heard some comments regarding the, the parking. Um, again, I'll point out that the, the parking is in complete compliance, compliance with the City of Vancouver Parking Bylaw. Um, I see that one gentleman was, uh, um, didn't, didn't seem to, uh, too keen on the idea of, of all the seventy-one bicycle spaces, but we found in most of the, uh, buildings that we've designed, that those bike rooms, um, are greatly used, actually. Um, if anything, we need more bicycles, uh, protected interior bicycle spaces for, for people and end-of-trip facilities. Um, and I believe the, the owners wanted to see a couple of comments as well.
Thank you. Uh, does staff have any closing comments? Oh. Oh, okay, yeah, please go ahead. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much. Uh, I also just wanted to quickly bring up the, um, the renovation that's been coming up and I do wish I was able to clarify that a bit further, but, um, having not been on, I do know from discussions in the past, um, that it really was life safety bringing it up. Um, and that did include flooring because there was plumbing issues significant. So it was, it was really to, really make sure that it was just up to code. Um, I just also want to say I do not disagree with, um, any of the comments here tonight. Uh, I thank everybody that came out. Tenant, uh, protection is very important. And so, yeah, again, thanks to everybody. We've been pursuing our rezoning for around eighteen months based on, uh, the policies of the area. And I followed the Granville Woodland policy and plans, uh, pretty diligently. Our application has met all the existing policies and guidelines. Um, we also feel pretty proud of the thorough communication we've had with staff, staff. Um, so thank you for all your efforts. Um, we continue to meet all these policies that are in place. We wanted to, um, we have worked very closely to meet all the requirements, um, especially with this tenant relocation plan. It is a thorough process. Um, we're trying to be a part of the solution here to meet the demands of more rental stock and options in our city and get more homes built, which we know all speakers would agree with. We do hear the opposition tonight and, uh, don't take that lightly and sympathize with the words that have been brought up. Uh, we're just trying to meet the goals of the city by increasing Vancouver's rental options and provide more housing. I did rent down the area for a little while, uh, sorry, a little while ago and I had to know the person in order to get that spot. So I absolutely understand that frustration of not being able to find rental in an area. Um, I feel the discussion tonight has been a lot around policy and, uh, I think that it's, we should take our TRPP and it is a very thorough and diligent one, so, um, it's not to be taken lightly and we will be sure to follow that absolutely to the T and make sure that everything's done correctly. And thank you all again very much.
Thank you. Does staff have any closing comments?
No further comments from staff.
Thank you. Does council have any question for staff? Councillor Claussen, please go ahead. Councillor Claussen, can you hear us?
Here. I just want to make sure, uh, I, I just want to make some, uh, uh, final comments here if, uh, if that's the appropriate time for this.
It's only question here, councillor Claussen. Only question, not comments yet.
Okay, then, then you can, uh, move me off the queue then, please, here. I'll, I'll save my comments.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Kerbyon, your turn.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I, I just wonder if staff can give us some context. We've heard about from one speaker that this building was built in the nineteen sixties and arguably it has been upgraded for life safety issues as well as some cosmetic renovations that some of the speakers referred to. Wonder if staff can speak to what discretion you have, if any, to judge applications like this. Uh, because I think it's really important for everybody to understand with respects to the merits of replacing an older building with a net increase of only twenty-three units, um, versus is there any opportunity within the policy framework for staff to look at it and say, you know what, this building has some life in it um, and can continue on and we're not gaining that many rental units? Um, do you have the ability to do that and not bring something forward or are you compelled that you have to based on the policy?
Thank you for the question, uh, councillor. Yardley McNeil, Director of Rezoning. Uh, the application came in under council's policy for the Granville Woodlands Community Plan. We're not in a position where we would suggest to an applicant to do more. It would be effectively non-compliant with respect to that policy. And so, we executed it in accordance with your, with your existing policy for the area and it does comply with that. If an applicant came forward and said to you, notwithstanding what you've got right now in, in the neighborhood under the plan, I'd like to do something different and, and larger, we would send it through the policy and I'd like to do something different and larger, we would send it through the policy inquiry process. And that, as you know, was adopted about a year and a half ago. It has its set of criteria. And it would be assessed according to that.
Okay. Um, do staff, can you offer any insight onto what you think the useful life of this building is?
We would ask that question to the applicant, actually.
Yeah, I don't have an opportunity to ask the applicant. That's why I'm asking if you're able to comment.
Uh, Chair.
Yes, please, clerk.
Yeah, just as a matter of process, the questions to applicants has now concluded.
Okay. Just in a short answer here, apparently the renovations were essentially just for life safety. And to prolong it for a shorter term, they're not full-on renovations that would allow it another forty, fifty years of life in the building.
Okay, I guess my question explicitly is how much do we know, does do staff know how much life was left in this building?
Uh, no, we don't have that information.
Okay. Um, we'll leave it there. I'll save time. Thanks.
Thank you, Consulor Kirbyon. Consulor Frye?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm, I'm, uh, I had some similar questions about the nature of the of the renovations. And certainly, um, I'm looking at some of the sort of recent sale history. Do we know the sale history of this building and was it, I see it listed by CBRE for about eight million dollars? Is that something that?
Uh, we don't have that information at this time.
So, and we really have no sense of of the extent to which the the structural integrity of this building may or may not be compromised if it was a cosmetic renovation beyond just life safety, but actually?
No, we don't. We don't have that information at this time, councillor.
Okay. Uh, I'm I'm gonna hold on that for a second. Thanks.
Hey, Consulor Carr, please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, yes, questions to staff? Um, can you please uh, update me on the process that I believe council um, directed in the update to the Vancouver Plan to incorporate Broadway Plan-like tenant protections into the Vancouver Plan? Where is that at in terms of timing?
Yes, thank you for the question. It's presently being scoped out by staff. It would be reported back to council um, through, um, in addition to all the other policy initiatives that are underway. And then a decision on when to proceed or to proceed at all with council's direction.
Do you have any sense of a timeline on that?
Um, I'm thinking it's probably within the next uh, year and a half. Uh, or sorry, it's this year at some point reporting back, I think later in the year. I'd have to check with housing staff on that.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, it's part of the housing targets refresh work, which would be reported back to you at some point this year.
That's fantastic. Okay, thank you. Um, is it possible to add a condition of approval to have the applicant look at um, potentially offering a tenant relocation plans or protections in in this particular application?
Uh, council has the ability to apply conditions to any rezoning above and beyond what the current policy allows. At your discretion, you could direct um, and make an amendment to include TRP provisions that go beyond the citywide policy that you have for TRP for this particular site. Um, and if you chose to do that, we would be happy to, you know, answer any questions you have with respect to that.
Okay, so my question's regarding that. Um, you know, I understand that this is not being a subject that has been obviously discussed. It's not in the proposal right now. Um, so perhaps you could provide some direction or information regarding the limitations that that might come with that or the language that that might enable the pursuit of it without necessarily, well, without binding it? I I don't think Schedule B um, directions are binding, but maybe you can clarify that.
Great. Um, you had some. Yeah. I'm gonna ask my colleague Annie Mobilies to respond.
Um, yeah, the, if if council wanted to add additional conditions, um, I think there's a variety of ways uh, that we could choose to do that. In this instance, there are ineligible tenants as well as eligible tenants uh, under the citywide TRP. And then there's been some discussion and questions regarding the Broadway Plan TRP tenant protections, uh, of which those could also be considered. Uh, and then we would incorporate that into the tenant relocation plan conditions in the report. Uh, and and it would follow the TRP process through to occupancy as we manage that from inquiry all the way through to occupancy.
Yeah. Um, perhaps either either you or um, uh, the, I think you're deputy mayor?
Yes.
At this point?
No, I'm acting mayor.
I'm sorry, acting mayor, so sorry. Um, well, anyway, chair. Um, perhaps you can determine or with staff um, if such a request from a councillor was put forward, such as myself, um, what kind of time, we would probably need a break. And so, um, uh, to have that discussion, I imagine. And I would ask that you would consider um, having a break right now so there could be a discussion around that issue.
I see. Uh, do we need a second there for this one or? Do we need to? Yeah. Okay, we don't need a second there for this, right? Just um, okay, does everyone agree we need a break to talk about this issue? All in favor, say yeah?
Yay.
Hey, opposed, say no? Hit motion carries unanimously. So we're gonna take five minutes break and talk about this.
I would say ten.
Ten minutes, okay. Ten minutes. We'll be back in ten minutes.
Discussing this topic. We're discussing this topic. So we're gonna continue our meeting. So we're going to continue our meeting. Uh, Councilor Carr, please go ahead with your time. Uh, Councilor Carr, please go ahead with your time.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, yes, thank you. Uh, I actually need more time because um, Uh, I actually need more time because um, because uh, the, thank you for taking this time, but um, because uh, the, thank you for taking this time, but um, law has to re- law has to re- that law has to review. that law has to review. I have to send something to law, but it will, I have to send something to law, but it, it will, that will happen momentarily, that will happen momentarily, but then law has to review but then law has to review
Okay. Okay.
um, the language, so I'm so sorry, but. um, the language, so I'm so sorry, but.
Oh, no, no problem. Oh, no, no problem. So we're gonna take another five minutes or? So we're gonna take another five minutes or?
Um, Chair, this is Councilor Boyle and I'm on the list to ask a question. Um, Chair, this is Councilor Boyle and I'm on the list to ask a question. I wonder if I can do that now? I wonder if I can do that now.
Can we do that with clerk? Can we do that with clerk? Okay, sure, we're gonna advance you, Councilor Boyle. Okay, sure, we're gonna advance you, Councilor Boyle. You can go ahead. You can go ahead. Hey, please go ahead, Councilor Boyle. Hey, please go ahead, Councilor Boyle.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with one of the questions asked earlier. I just wanted to follow up with one of the questions asked earlier. Um, to ask staff, uh, given the low number of buildings, Um, to ask staff, uh, given the low number of buildings, of new buildings allowed under the um, pace of change policy, of new buildings allowed under the um, pace of change policy, are, are staff able to prioritize? are, are staff able to prioritize? Are they just, do they just come to us on a kind of first come, first served basis? Are they just, do they just come to us on a kind of first come, first served basis? Or are staff able to prioritize within that pace of change policy um, Or are staff able to prioritize within that pace of change policy um, buildings that have less or no displacement of existing renters? buildings that have less or no displacement of existing renters? Is that a, is that a metric that we use in terms of when um, projects come forward? Is that a, is that a metric that we use in terms of when um, projects come forward?
Um, thanks for the question, Councilor. Um, thanks for the question, Councilor. So uh, staff basically just prioritize the projects in the order in which they uh, So uh, staff basically just prioritize the projects in the order in which they uh, come in um, on the waitlist. come in um, on the waitlist.
Okay, is, is there um, you know, I'm, I'm asking about this project Okay, is, is there um, you know, I'm, I'm asking about this project and a policy question, so you can, you can tell me if this is the wrong place. and a policy question, so you can, you can tell me if this is the wrong place. But is there a tool that exists like that, that we could, But is there a tool that exists like that, that we could, that would enable us, again, particularly given the low number of new buildings that would enable us, again, particularly given the low number of new buildings that are approved in this neighborhood? that are approved in this neighborhood? Um, would allow us to prioritize uh, zero or low displacement new rental? Um, would allow us to prioritize uh, zero or low displacement new rental?
Uh, thank you for the question, Councilor Andrew Pass, Community Planning. Uh, thank you for the question, Councilor Andrew Pass, Community Planning. One of the uh, pieces of work that we do need to do as, as part of uh, One of the pieces of work that we do need to do as, as part of uh, the pace of change review is look at questions like that. the pace of change review is look at questions like that. The effect, the efficacy of the, the policy, how it's worked over the past few years The effect, the efficacy of the, the policy, how it's worked over the past few years since uh, since it's been in place following the plan approval. since uh, since it's been in place following the plan approval. Uh, so we, we do have a work program identified for the pace of change review. Uh, so we, we do have a work program identified for the pace of change review. Uh, looking at questions about how intake takes place, what projects uh, are prioritized. Uh, looking at questions about how intake takes place, what projects uh, are prioritized. Uh, will certainly be part of that. Uh, will certainly be part of that. Um, it's not work that has uh, started yet though, Um, it's not work that has uh, started yet though, but it is, uh, it is in our work plan for the upcoming um, uh, year or so. but it is, uh, it is in our work plan for the upcoming um, uh, year or so.
Okay, do, do you have a sense of when that might come back to us? Okay, do, do you have a sense of when that might come back to us?
Uh, we were actually building it into our work plan um, Uh, we were actually building it into our work plan um, following the Vancouver Plan implementation. following the Vancouver Plan implementation. Uh, but we recognize that there actually does need to be some prioritization Uh, but we recognize that there actually does need to be some prioritization given to the additional question around the Broadway tenant protections, given to the additional question around the Broadway tenant protections, which will have implications for neighborhoods like Grandview Woodland which will have implications for neighborhoods like Grandview Woodland with uh, RM three, RM four zoning. with uh, RM three, RM four zoning. Uh, so that's actually that question of sequencing about which piece of work comes first Uh, so that's actually that question of sequencing about which piece of work comes first is something that we're looking at now. is something that we're looking at now. Uh, obviously, the citywide question coming out of the Vancouver Plan amendments Uh, obviously, the citywide question coming out of the Vancouver Plan amendments uh, is um, is uh, the more substantive one uh, to look at. uh, is um, is uh, the more substantive one uh, to look at. Uh, but we do want to make sure that we actually factor in the Grandview Woodland Uh, but we do want to make sure that we actually factor in the Grandview Woodland components as well, because that pace of change review is due. components as well, because that pace of change review is due. It was something that we did commit uh, to doing uh, as, as part of the Grandview Woodland Plan implementation. It was something that we did commit uh, to doing uh, as, as part of the Grandview Woodland Plan implementation.
Okay, when you say you have a um, pace of change review planned as part of the work plan, Okay, when you say you have a um, pace of change review planned as part of the work plan, you mean specific to the pace of change policy in Grandview Woodland, not? you mean specific to the pace of change policy in Grandview Woodland, not?
Correct, correct. Correct, correct. The policy itself in the plan does identify the fact The policy itself in the plan does identify the fact that staff do need to report back to council uh, following the first three years that staff do need to report back to council uh, following the first three years or three years of the uh, the plan approval. or three years of the uh, the plan approval. That was delayed actually because of COVID. That was delayed actually because of COVID. Uh, and then uh, of course, with the Vancouver Plan process winding up Uh, and then uh, of course, with the Vancouver Plan process winding up and then the Broadway Plan Amendment, uh, we wanted to make sure that we sequenced those two items, and then the Broadway Plan Amendment, uh, we wanted to make sure that we sequenced those two items, the work planning around that appropriately, so it, it was done in a sensible fashion. the work planning around that appropriately, so it, it was done in a sensible fashion.
Okay, I really appreciate that update. Okay, I really appreciate that update. Um, while we're just waiting another moment. Um, while we're just waiting another moment.
Join, this conference will end in five minutes. Join, this conference will end in five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Enter star one to cancel and continue the conference. Enter star one to cancel and continue the conference.
Um, I, I just have one more question if I still have a little time. Um, I, I just have one more question if I still have a little time.
Yes, you do, Councilor Boyle, go ahead, yeah. Yes, you do, Councilor Boyle, go ahead, yeah.
Thanks. Thanks. Wondering if staff have the um, numbers for how the uh, Wondering if staff have the um, numbers for how the uh, the number of residents, the population has changed the number of residents, the population has changed or hasn't changed in Grandview Woodland over the last five or 10 years? or hasn't changed in Grandview Woodland over the last five or 10 years?
I'd have to double check with my colleagues in our, our data planning. I'd have to double check with my colleagues in our, our data planning. We do have some um, early suggestion that the policy, that the, sorry, We do have some um, early suggestion that the policy, that the, sorry, the population of Grandview Woodland proper, the local area uh, remained relatively stagnant the population of Grandview Woodland proper, the local area uh, remained relatively stagnant uh, between census periods. uh, between census uh, periods. Um, however, the larger study area encompassed by the plan Um, however, the larger study area encompassed by the plan did see some very um, very modest growth in that, in that same five-year intersensual period. did see some very um, very modest growth in that, in that same five-year inter-sensual period. Um, and sorry, just to clarify, the, the answer, the, the broader study area goes further south Um, and sorry, just to clarify, the, the answer, the, the broader study area goes further south uh, to about 12th Avenue, whereas the local area boundaries ended at Broadway. uh, to about 12th Avenue, whereas the local area boundaries ended at Broadway.
Okay, okay, I really appreciate those answers, thanks. Okay, okay, I really appreciate those answers, thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Boyle. Thanks, Councilor Boyle. Uh, I guess now it's, Councilor Boyle, you are still in the queue? Uh, I guess now it's, Councilor Boyle, you are still in the queue?
Uh, no, Chair Hempton, thanks. Uh, no, Chair Hempton, thanks.
Yeah, I saw your name there. Yeah, I saw your name there. Uh, okay, Councilor Carr? Uh, okay, Councilor Carr?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Um, I, I have circulated an amendment, but I, I'm, I believe that probably there Um, I, I have circulated an amendment, but I, I'm, I believe that probably there has to be a motion first, is that correct? has to be a motion first, is that correct?
Uh, clerk, we'll have to move the motion first, right? Uh, clerk, we'll have to move the motion first, right?
Um, yes, Chair, we are still in question period. Um, yes, Chair, we are still in question period. There is no motion on the floor. There is no motion on the floor.
Okay, is that all your question, Councilor? Okay, is that all your question, Councilor?
Well, I'll move the motion, I'll move the recommendations Well, I'll move the motion, I'll move the recommendations and I have forwarded an amendment. and I have forwarded an amendment. Um, and I would appreciate uh, law looking at that. Um, and I would appreciate uh, law looking at that. I mean, I leave it to you to, to um, to certainly uh, pursue this, I mean, I leave it to you to, to um, to certainly uh, pursue this, but I would hope that, I mean, amendments to the conditions of approval, but I would hope that, I mean, amendments to the conditions of approval, to me, I would sure want to make them sure that they are legal. to me, I would sure want to make them sure that they are legal.
Okay, so I guess we need to take a five-minute recess Okay, so I guess we need to take a five-minute recess for the Law Department to look at that. for the Law Department to look at that.
Chair, uh, Joe, I did hear a mover, but I didn't catch that there was a second Chair, uh, Joe, I did hear a mover, but I didn't catch that there was a second or for the main motion, is that correct? or for the main motion, is that correct?
Yeah, there's no second. Yeah, there's no second. Anyone want to second the, the motion? Anyone want to second the, the motion? Okay, so move by Councilor Carr, second by Councilor Frye. Okay, so move by Councilor Carr, second by Councilor Frye. And then we're gonna take five minutes recess, I believe, And then we're gonna take five minutes recess, I believe, to, for Legal Department to look at the other amendment. to, for Legal Department to look at the other amendment.
Amendment on the floor, we need to have the amendment ready. So just want to remind everyone about that. Uh, okay, so we need a second there for Councilor Carr's amendment. Who would like to second their Councilor Carr's amendment? You, you, we need a second there. Okay, so now we're talking about another amendment, right? Not the previous one anymore.
There, Joe.
Hmm.
So currently, maybe just a quick summary. Currently what we had was the main motion was moved by Councilor Carr and it was seconded by Councilor Fry.
Yep.
Then what I saw took place is Councilor Carr circulated an amendment and put it forward and we recessed. So, um, that would leave Councilor Carr, I believe, still with the floor and we do not, and we're still sitting at the main motion. Because we do not have a
Okay, so still main motion. So now is the amendment.
Yes.
Okay, so well, I'm gonna move you to the amendment queue, Councilor Carr. And we need a second there for this amendment, right? Okay, second, second by Councilor Fry. Hey, Councilor Carr, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I, so my amendment uh, is, is to address the concerns that have been raised um, by a, well, of the vast majority of speakers. Um, it really is, uh, intended to, to provide some increased protection and to tenants, um, in terms of the requirement or the, um, obligation to find appropriate alternative accommodation uh, for the tenants that are there. Um, and that is an actual alignment, although it's not the same language as the tenant protection policy that's in the Broadway plan. It is what is in the Broadway or similar to that. And it also is similar to what is going to be considered in the revised Housing Vancouver Strategy. Uh, and also, um, the, thus the Vancouver Plan or relevant for the Vancouver Plan. Um, so it's, um, yeah, so that's what my amendment does. It's, it's addressing the, the concern, the primary concern we heard about from tenants.
Hey, Councilor Kirby Young.
Yeah, can I ask a point of information through you to staff, Chair?
Yep.
Um, can I ask staff to explain to me what this means? Because I don't understand it the way that the language is written. Because I find it confusing if you can specifically where it says provided they qualify. And it says, but if they're eligible and ineligible. So if they're ineligible, they would not qualify. But this language says provided they qualify. So, and then, so that's my first question. So what does that actually mean in real, in real human terms?
Thanks for the question, Annie Movilis, with housing regulation. Um, so the wording, as you see it, um, is, um, that both eligible and ineligible tenants would benefit from a particular clause in the citywide TRP that provides for extra assistance finding alternate accommodation for those tenants that qualify. So that provide that they qualify, um, has to do with, um, a variety of things. And, and in every TRP that we have, we consider this. Sometimes it's situations of low income, special circumstances, um, uh, that they might have um, in, in their lives and barriers in their ability to find housing.
Can I ask in simple language? And I'm jumping in just because I have limited time.
Yeah.
So does this mean every, the 13 tenants in this building? I think around half qualified and half didn't. Does this mean the other half will all qualify?
Not for the way that the amendment is written. They wouldn't qualify for all of the benefits of the citywide TRP. But this particular part of the citywide TRP, which is finding alternate accommodation.
I, again, I understand it's finding alternate accommodation when I'm asking. This is, does this mean 100% of the tenants will qualify for finding alternate accommodation?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Okay, this is clear. I just wanted like, and then my follow-up question to that is, isn't finding alternate accommodation sending them a bunch of the Craigslist ads that we heard about earlier? So what does this meaningfully actually do for people?
Yeah, and it isn't that. Um, really what it means is that the applicant's required to work directly, and it's usually a one-on-one with tenants, to understand what their needs are and to find them housing. Um, and so they need to, uh, come to an agreement to find housing in order for the TRP requirement to be met. And so city staff work with the applicant to ensure that. So it's not just three Craigslist ads.
Is there gonna be, is there gonna, can I, a follow-up point if I may, Chair? Because I really want to understand this. Um, so that people don't think that this is a fantasy and they're gonna be getting a whole bunch of things they didn't get before.
Hmm.
What is this different than the six tenants that qualify are getting now? Where they're getting emailed lists of possible apartments they can go to?
Yeah, so this, the, the tenants that are eligible currently, um, filled out a survey. And that survey comes through to city staff. And in that survey, um, tenants can, um, identify as needing extra assistance. Uh, not all of the tenants, uh, with the information that we have now on the most recent survey have identified as having special circumstance and needing, uh, the benefit of this particular part of the TRP. We only have one of the seven that's requested extra assistance. But all of them are currently eligible to request extra assistance of the seven that are eligible, um, from the applicant.
Okay, so it's like working one-on-one? So they would go and look at places together? Like, what does that special assistance look like?
It, it can be a number of things. It can be working one-on-one. Sometimes applicants hire tenant relocation specialists. It can mean working, uh, with B C housing waitlists, um, with other rental buildings in the area. It depends on the priorities that the tenants, um, articulate as part of that survey. It might be that their priority is staying in the catchment where their kids go to school. Or it might be that they want to be close to transit.
Okay.
Affordability, et cetera.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm gonna leave there just to save some time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby Young.
Councilor Meisner.
Yeah, you can take me off acting mayor. Uh, Councilor Kirby Young answered my question.
Yeah, thank you. Councilor Boyle.
Thanks. I'm just interested to follow up on Councilor Kirby Young's questions to get a sense if this means that if all of those seven tenants who are eligible under the TRPP requested additional support, that the requirement would be that the developer or a tenant relocation specialist that they hire, um, find, help them find new housing and then ensure that it is secured, that they are the, you know, recognizing there's 100 tenants at a, um, open house sometimes, that they are the ones who get it and that the, um, building permit would be withheld until that were fulfilled?
Uh, thanks for the question. That, that's correct. Uh, so the, um, the, the tenants that identify as needing special assistance, if, um, uh, for example, um, they're qualifying because they're low income, we typically ask for proof of income to demonstrate that they're low income. But it might not be low income that is their special circumstance. Uh, we would, I, you know, anecdotally in the TRPs that we have, and we have hundreds of these, usually it's one or two tenants in a building that require the special assistance. Uh, it's not typically everybody, but all eligible tenants are eligible for that extra assistance if they, if they qualify and, and communicate that to, uh, staff through the survey.
Okay, and the tenants who aren't eligible for the TRPP, could they still qualify for special assistance?
Uh, this amendment is suggesting that yes, but typically no. If you're not eligible, uh, for the citywide TRP, this wouldn't be something that would be available to you as a tenant.
Okay, okay. Really, um, appreciate those answers. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilor Boyle. Thank, uh, Councilor Kirby Young.
Yeah, I have one minute, so I'd appreciate a quick answer to this. And I'm just like, do we not hear that this building is at market rates? And theoretically, if these tenants are paying market rates, is it not a logical assumption that they're not gonna qualify based on low income or the other thing? So they're not gonna get this extra help?
Uh, it, it could Uh, it, it could be, um, uh, we would need to look into that, yeah.
So.
It is true that often people pay way more than thirty percent of their household incomes on rent, um, which I think we heard from some of the speakers, but we would need to check.
So they may be struggling or have affordability challenges, but they may not qualify as low income according to the special provisions?
That's right.
So this amendment could be meaningless because people have somehow found a way to pay these market rents?
Yeah.
So it, it could be performative, it may not actually benefit people.
Uh, for those that are seeking, uh, uh, extra assistance because of low income, but it's not always low income, um, there, and I don't wanna kind of list all the things, but there are special circumstances, um, that would qualify people for extra assistance.
Maybe one of my other council colleagues wants to follow up on what those special circumstances would be, cause I'm out of time, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby Young, Councilor Frye.
I'm actually, uh, curious to, uh, to staff. Um, the, 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 that is limited to finding appropriate alternate. Does, how, how are we interpreting that? Does that mean that they're not, that their, their compensation or whatever is only limited to that and not say, uh, rent commensurate to their, their stay or moving expenses and those other pieces from the TRPP?
I believe so, I, the way that the amendment is worded, it would be limited to this extra assistance finding accommodation and wouldn't include, um, uh, some of the things that the eligible tenants are receiving, um, compensation based on length of tenancy, uh, write a first refusal at a twenty percent discount. Uh, and so that, I, I believe the intent here is, uh, to ensure that those that are ineligible, um, are able to find alternate accommodation quite specifically. Not all of the other things as part of the.
My concern is that we're referencing all tenants, both eligible and ineligible, and perhaps lumping them all into this one bucket that is now limited to only finding appropriate accommodations as opposed to. Am I misinterpreting this?
Yeah, I, I think I understand your question. I, the, the eligible tenants are eligible for the citywide TRP and all of the things that come with the citywide TRP. This is bringing in ineligible tenants as well, but specifically for that extra assistance finding alternate accommodation. Um, so the eligible tenants are still eligible for all of these things. It wouldn't then mean that they weren't with the way that this worded.
They're not limited to only that, okay, alright.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, we might need legal staff to make sure that we've written that right, but.
I'm just making sure that you're interpreting it that way and this is.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Chair, I have a time-sensitive point of procedure.
Yes.
Just to remind you that this meeting will end in seven minutes unless we get unanimous agreement to extend.
Okay, we need a motion for the extended meeting past ten P M. To finish the, this, uh, finish business, okay, uh, second there?
Second.
Second by Councilor Frye, uh, moved by Councilor Clark. So we're gonna continue this, this meeting, finish all the items beyond.
You need a vote.
Oh, all in favors, yeah? Opposing, eh? Okay, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Hey, Councilor Claussen, you finished, right, Councilor Frye?
I am, thanks Chair.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Claussen.
Thank you, Chair, just, uh, um, again, I, I, I think this is well-intended, but, um, potentially with some, some, uh, precedent-setting, uh, implications. Um, so to staff, I just wanted to ask, um, about the special circumstances. Um, beyond, um, the, the income consideration, are there other special circumstances? And I realize that we're, we're definitely putting you on the spot, um, at this point right now.
Uh, yes, thanks for the, for the question. Um, so to cl- to clarify, uh, special circumstances could be, um, uh, mental health issues, uh, physical health issues. So often we have tenants who, um, have accessibility, uh, challenges that require them a particular kind of accommodation. Uh, it could be, um, uh, you know, in, in the bucket of, uh, um, substance abuse issues. Uh, so they're looking for, uh, could be supportive housing options uh, because the market, uh, stock might not be appropriate housing for them. So it's really everything that, uh, might, you might find, uh, that, um, causes barriers to housing, uh, for people. I hope that's helpful.
That's, that is, thank you. And, uh, and again, just, i- is this something, I feel like, um, because this appendix is one that we use for a lot of these developments, is this potentially have ramifications for, um, uh, other projects going forward that fall outside of the, the Broadway Plans TRPP?
My understanding, I, I, I guess the, the short answer is no. Um, this decision and, uh, if, if you were to make this decision would be limited to this, uh, property quite specifically.
But it would, would it be fair that, that people would cite this as something? And again, I have my own concerns about this particular project, but I, um, I'm looking right now at this amendment and we're talking about this amendment, and I'm concerned that this amendment will, uh, uh, obligate us to come back to this for projects that we haven't had time to, um, uh, look at the policies um, with regards to renter protections.
Uh, thank you for the question, uh, Councilor, it's Yardley McNeil, Director of Rezoning. Uh, whatever, this amendment does not encumber council from, um, or, or require council to apply similar provisions to future projects. When in the context of a rezoning, the recommendations are explicit to that site. So you're not legally, uh, required to copy that onto another project that might be similar. You can do that at your discretion, but it doesn't better your ability to, uh, deal with each of these individually.
Um, okay, I'll, I'll pause there, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Claussen, Councilor Meisner.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, I worry that although it will not require us to do this with other projects that come forward, it may set a precedent or an expectation that we might. Um, so I do have some concerns about that. But my question is around, um, the tenant, uh, relocation specialists that may potentially be required. Um, you mentioned people, you know, dealing with some pretty like complex issues, mental health, substance use potentially, and finding them housing. Is that something that an applicant is really skilled to, to take on?
It's a good question. Um, we, there aren't, uh, very many TRP specialists working in the city. Uh, and, um, it is often applicants who take on that work. Uh, my team works directly with the applicant, uh, and, and really tries to, um, assist and, and provide advice, uh, if they're running into trouble, uh, trying to navigate the, the limited, uh, supply of housing, especially for people with special circumstances. It is always better if there's a TRP specialist involved, um, but there aren't very many of them. So there can be challenges and, and we work with applicants, uh, on a daily basis to try to address those challenges and support tenants, um, in, in their search for housing.
Okay, so there is, uh, some support from city staff to the applicant?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And, and if they did need to hire, um, a relocation specialist, what is the cost like for something like that?
I actually don't know the answer to that question. I think it, I would imagine it varies greatly, uh, depending on, on the number of tenants and, and the kinds of, um, special circumstances that they might be in. But yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, actually, it's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Meisner, so see, okay, Councilor Kirby Young.
Yeah, I, I wanted, can we provide comments, uh, now?
Okay, so you're running out of time? Do we want to ask the second round of questions?
Yes.
Let me do that, yeah, okay, we need a second there?
No, it's not questions, it's, um, I'm, I'm asking about if we make comments on the amendment.
Uh, can we do that, clerk? It's only the question period, right? Debate, okay.
I'm just noting my clock is running while, Chair.
Okay. So.
Yes.
Yes, so.
Can we make comments?
Can we make comments here or just question?
During, uh, during debate, it would be what you wish to bring forward, to bring your, your influence to the vote, so it can be comments, it can be debate, yes.
Okay, and, uh, Councilor Kirby Young, you are running out of time? So we need to ask a second round of question, right? Can we do that, clerk, or?
Hmm. I think you're looking for a second round of the ability to debate, for each council member to debate, is that correct?
Yes, can we do that?
Um. Yes. Uh, I would have to find the section in the Act, but you, in the procedure bylaw, but you're currently in debate, it's not question period. You could give me a minute, I'll try to.
Okay, we're gonna recess in one, just one minute, so everyone please stay here.
That app, section eight point eight of the procedure bylaw refers to speaking to a motion under debate. Do we have corn, sorry?
We. Anyone on the line? Yeah, they are on the line.
Um. And that section indicates a council member must not speak to a motion more than five minutes unless council resolves to permit the member one five-minute extension. And in either case, must not speak to the motion again until every member of council has spoken or has had the opportunity to speak to it. So, um, that would require a motion of council to enable the council member additional debate time of five minutes.
Okay, thank you, clerk. Do we have a motion to allow Councilor Kirby Young to speak more than five minutes? My Claussen. Okay, second there? Uh, all, all in favors, yeah? Okay, opposing, eh? Okay, so the motion moved, uh, moved by Councilor Claussen and seconded by Councilor Meisner and motion carried unanimously. Uh, Councilor Kirby Young, you have the floor, please continue.
Uh, thanks Chair and thank you, Council, for the consideration, I appreciate it. Um, here, here are my comments and I'm listening really intently to all the speakers tonight. And we had some really articulate speakers, a number of these current residents that live in this building. Um, and I really worry and I'm concerned when we pass motions that I don't think are going to solve for the problems that have actually been expressed. And when I hear from staff around, um, what some of the special considerations are, mental health, physical health, accessibility, low income accessibility, uh, we heard that these current units are not accessible. So therefore I can conclude that accessibility is not one of the special considerations or issues for these tenants. Um, as I said, they were all articulate, uh, many of them seemed to appear at, at surface value of physical health. And there is a huge challenge with affordability in this city, I recognize it. But low income is a, also very different threshold in terms of what that level is versus the, um, goal that it's healthy for people to spend on more than thirty percent of their income on rent. And so what concerns me, and I'm just being straight up about it, is that I feel that this is an attempt to be seen to be doing something, it's performative, but I don't necessarily think it's gonna have the benefit or the impact that some people might perceive. And I don't wanna give people false hope that they're going to get this benefit when my gut is based on who we've heard from tonight and what we know about some of the tendencies and who's qualified and who hasn't, that they're actually gonna get a benefit out of this. And that's my, that's, that's honestly, um, a pretty significant concern for me because I think it's council's job to be clear and transparent and to try to make changes that's actually going to be meaningful. And in this case, I don't think that this motion will hit that intention. I think what I heard from a lot of the folks today, the residents, is really valid, real concerns around the fact that they felt this building had some more life. They love their neighborhood, they felt that they wanted to continue to stay for a period of time in this area. Um, and that was really reflecting the fact that we, I don't recall a public hearing where we have heard consistent opposition across the board. Usually we hear a split, uh, a bunch of people in favor, a bunch opposed. Um, sometimes a lot of people supporting a project, but I don't recall hearing one where we've had so many folks opposed and I think it's just simply that they wanted to stay in this building. That's what I heard mostly, in loud and clear from the tenants. So I don't think this actually gets solving the issues that people presented and that's why I'm concerned with the amendment as it's framed, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor.
And I should say also, it doesn't actually give them those extended protections either that had been discussed. It just seems to strike a very tiny sliver of something that is not meaningful. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Kirby Young, Councilor Claussen.
Yeah, I don't need to repeat too much of what Councilor Kirby Young just said. I agree with her, uh, assessment here. Again, I think that this comes from a very good place, I think it's well-meaning. Uh, but it does, it, it, it doesn't have, um, uh, the, the net result of really responding to some of the concerns that we've heard from, uh, from, from speakers tonight, which I think many of which are, uh, are very much on point. Um, so I will not be supporting this amendment and, uh, uh, but again, I think in, uh, in my final comments, I'll sort of speak to the broader issue that we're faced, uh, with, uh, with this rezoning, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Claussen, Councilor Montague.
Yeah, thanks Chair, I, I, I think I'll echo some of those similar comments. Um, I, I don't think this amendment will accomplish what it, it's intended to. And, and I say that reluctantly too, because I'm not really sure what this amendment is trying to do. I, I find it contradicts itself, I still don't, even after staff ex- but explanations, I still don't think I, I really understand what it's trying to do. Uh, and like my colleague said, uh, Councilor Kirby Young, a lot of what I heard was that, was that, that the tenants in these buildings weren't looking for, for, uh, for help with regards to relocation, they just didn't want to move, period. They saw this as their, as kind of a long-term home for them. Um, so I, I don't think it's accomplishing what it's, what I'm, I think it's intended to accomplish. Um, and I worry about changing policy that's been developed over a period of time on the fly. Um, so reluctantly, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote against the amendment.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Montague, Councilor Carr.
Well, I listened carefully to the, uh, the speakers that we had, I took notes. And over and over, um, speakers clearly said they were worried about finding alternate accommodation. Um, many of them talked about the very low, uh, vacancy rate within Vancouver, point six percent. Uh, they're just, that, that, you know, you search Craigslist, that they're, and they think the, the, uh, apartments are gone before the, you know, you even pick up a phone. Um, so, uh, yes, there were some concerns around the building, but over and over, the cri- critical concern that I heard was, where do we go? There is nothing in Vancouver, uh, that, that I can find. Uh, and not even within my price range, that wasn't even, you know, a, a phrase that was added. I can't find accommodation, the city is so tight on rental, um, housing. Um, so, um, I also listened very carefully to staff and they explained, um, that the consequence of this amendment would be, um, that the applicant would be required to work, and I'm, this is a quote, I took it, these words right down, required to work directly with tenants, one-on-one, to find them housing. That is what this is intended to do. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm sort of flabbergasted that you're not interpreting things the way I heard. Um, and, uh, and the repeated, um, statements made, both by your que- answers to your questions by staff and from these speakers that we heard tonight.
Thank you, Councilor Carr, Councilor Frye.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna e- echo support for Councilor Carr there and just, I, you know, I, I heard the notion of false hope and I don't think any renters in this city are harboring any false hopes at all. This is just about giving them a little bit of an extra hand, finding, uh, alternate placement accommodations in what we heard loud and clear is, is a very, uh, scary and desperate market, uh, scouring Craigslist for non-existent places. I think, um, this is about false hope, it's just about help, so. I'll be supporting the amendment.
Thank you, Councilor Frye. Thank you, Councilor Frye. Seeing no other question on the queue, so we're gonna call a vote, so Clark, please take us to the voting panel. Council, please register your vote. Okay, so amendment filed with Councilor Zhou in opposition, Councilor Kirby Young, Councilor Montague, Councilor Claussen, and Councilor Meisner in opposition. Okay, we have to go back to the main queue. Councilor Boyle, you have the floor.
I think it's a holdover, I'll wait, thanks Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Carr?
On the main motion, I'm really disappointed that there weren't the extra supports offered to tenants in the building. I think that that, there was an opportunity to do that, and it's a missed opportunity that that could be rectified over the long term by changes to the Vancouver Plan and our Housing Vancouver Strategy. But this is in a sort of an interim period, and we could have, we could have done something good for the tenants here. And in general, I'm, you know, I feel that the, I mean, I have a hard time with my vote on this project. And the reason I have a hard time is because this project follows all of the policies that we have in place. And the purpose of a public hearing is to see whether or not a project does follow your policies. I mean, that's the basic bottom line in terms of this process. It does, it's, you know, not an egregious height, we've seen lots of buildings where people come out and really complain, a few, one did tonight in terms of the speakers. But generally speaking, it's in keeping with, you know, with the kind of development that has been touted as acceptable throughout the residential areas of the city. It's got some good features in terms of play areas, lots of new, twenty-two new trees, lots of greenery around it. Children's play areas in particular, but also outdoor space and indoor amenity space. I love the fact that, of course, it is accessible, and that was a good point made, I think, by the applicant, the current building is not. But I really do have a tough time with a project at a point in time where where we really, where tenants are left stranded. People who will be out of this building have nowhere to go. So I'm, you know, I think that, again, I somehow I've said it a couple of times this term, I very rarely abstain on a project. I understand what abstaining means. In my case, I know it would be a vote that would not be in opposition, it would allow the project to go forward. And I think, as I've already stated, this project meets the criteria of following our guidelines and our policies and the Grandview Woodland Plan. But I am unhappy with the situation in Vancouver and the dilemma it puts people in when we develop and we haven't got any alternatives. I'm very interested at this point in time at finding some way within the city in which we can find interim housing or bridge housing for people. I'm not sure how we can do that, but I'm intent on following that up out of this public hearing as I think a priority that we have to look at in terms of making sure we don't have tenants put into that untenable position of having to leave a place and not knowing where they can go and maybe not ever ending up in Vancouver. So I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Councilor Carr. Councilor Montague?
Thanks Chair, yeah, I'm not super thrilled with what's in front of us here. Think one of my colleagues mentioned earlier that we have this decision to make in order to increase the amount of the amount of density and increase the amount of supply, we're gonna cause some disruption. I wish we were getting more supply with the disruption we're causing. I know there's projects sitting in limbo and sitting in the pipeline, and I won't name them, but can potentially bring hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of units online. While there is a small amount of increased units here, and I appreciate the accessibility and this increased supply, I wish there was more, but I think when you look at it on the surface, it's compliant with policy. And while, while I'd like to see more units being brought on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the motion here. But, you know, I sure would like to see a better triage and prioritization of of housing that will bring far more units at a far quicker pace.
Thank you. Councilor Meisner?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a really difficult one. You know, it's unfortunate that these existing somewhat affordable rental buildings are the redevelopment opportunities in this, in the city. I would much rather see, you know, surface parking lots or areas that are not going to be eliminating an existing rental building that's affordable to working-class people. So I think we have some work to do there with our planning process, in particular in Grandview Woodland. The thing that bothers me about the project is the fact that tenants moved in in 2018 into a newly renovated building and probably never thought that they'd be looking for a place again. And I think that's really difficult. I really wanted to support the amendment by Councilor Carr, but I feel that, or I'm very concerned that we'd be setting a precedent without doing proper policy development. And I just, I worry that, of the impacts of that, unintended consequences, because building rental housing in Vancouver is getting more difficult all the time due to rising interest rates, land costs, and we need to do, we need to have a balance of protecting tenants, but also enabling the development of rental housing. It's a very fine balance. But the fact is, is that this project is compliant with the policy. It will add additional rental homes. Tenants will receive compensation who are eligible through the TRP, and they'll be able to move back back to the building at below-market rental rates. So I do take comfort in that, but certainly acknowledge the disruption this is going to cause in their lives. And again, I think it's really difficult to make an exception on this one project without it impacting other projects that are going to come forward. So I will very reluctantly be supporting this project due to the unintended consequences, I think, that would occur if we made an, didn't support it, just this one project this time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Claussen?
Thank you Chair, I'm gonna be sort of echoing some comments here and just have my own sort of take on whatever tonight. I am also feeling like I am struggling and have been struggling with this project based upon some of the things in the comments that we've heard tonight. And like Councilor Meisner, I do think that the amendment that came forward had some, had some potential, but I was really worried that we were going to be opening up a potential can of worms that was gonna take us a long time to unwind. But again, I respect the fact that it came from a place of trying to support people, and I know that we do have supports in place. But, you know, what we heard from the members of the community is that we're about to lose some affordable housing here. It takes nothing away from the building itself, which, as others have pointed out, has some good features. But, you know, as one of the speakers pointed out during our deliberations tonight, the council has essentially inherited policies that have led us here. And our role tonight is to uphold that existing policy. But that doesn't mean we cannot express our ideas on ways to improve our policies going forward. And as several pointed out, this building just received new life through a recent and likely costly renovation. And so to, you know, must factor in these kinds of details before we get to this stage. And, you know, I've been in this community many times, I've shopped at Templeton Market nearby, and I appreciate that this is a close-knit neighborhood with a quantity of affordable rental that we don't see in many other parts of the city. And we've heard from many who've urged council to enhance the renter protections, like the ones we put forward in the Broadway Plan. And we've also heard from those who asked if swing space, some kind of accommodation could be available for displaced tenants, which is not a requirement of any of our developments, but it's something that certainly make these kinds of transitions more attractive and less disruptive going forward. So I just want to make sure that, you know, going forward, as we do these kinds of, you know, changes and bringing in new rental, that we are able to find ways to be more sensitive to the neighborhood context and as well retain as much affordable housing as where we can and ensure that our renters are protected. So as others said, I will be supporting this with some misgivings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Claussen. Councilor Boyle?
Thanks, I'll be as quick as I can after a long evening. Like others have alluded to, this is a, what's the word we're using? A crappy situation we're put in, the city has for decades had, for numerous reasons, had policy that prioritizes new rental where there's existing rental. And I think fundamentally, that's an unjust approach to addressing the housing crisis that isn't gonna get there. And I will continue to advocate that we build more rental housing in, on lots and in neighborhoods where there isn't currently very much rental housing and where displacement is significantly minimized. We need more rental housing everywhere, I have no problem with the height of this, I would have been happy to see it be taller and I would have been delighted to see it a few blocks away, where there's currently only detached homes that are very expensive and where this kind of rental housing would make a significant improvement to affordability without displacement and without the loss of what are, continue to be pretty limited new secure rental housing shouldn't come at the expense of existing secure rental housing. We should be building new secure rental housing that replaces detached homes and adds to the stock, at least until we've done that so sufficiently that we have a reasonable vacancy rate and then look to rebuilding older stock when tenants have an option. What we heard pretty clearly and of, well, I will say for myself reluctantly, is that we can't change the tenant protections more strongly right now. But I will certainly continue to push for those stronger tenant protections across the whole city and to make sure that they are maintained within the Broadway Plan when the Broadway Plan comes back to us. I, I'm, I'm not gonna support this project, I have wrestled with it all week. I am aware it will pass with or without me, and I again want to be really clear on my position, which is that we need stronger tenant protections across the whole city, we need to protect existing rental, and we need more rental housing in every neighborhood, particularly where it doesn't already exist. I don't think there's anywhere in the city that five stories or six stories of rental doesn't belong, and I will continue to push for that as a solution. And I will leave it there.
Thank you, Councilor Boyle. Councilor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thanks Chair, I don't like this one at all either, and I think that's what you're hearing as a sentiment around the council table, that everybody's struggling with this one. And I will say that it's not a great net gain when you've gone from thirteen units to thirty-six, it's twenty-three new units. Notwithstanding the fact that we've got a record-low vacancy rate in Vancouver of one percent, and we desperately need additional rental supply, but we are displacing other folks, and that really is not a sort of a great feel and a great situation to be in, because the upside is not that much more significant. It would have been helpful to get a bit more information around if we had had a chance to ask those questions around the lifespan of the building. Because at some point, buildings do have to be replaced, this one, I think it was around sixty-three years old, give or take, based on what some folks had shared. But I think it's important to say that our job in the council chambers is not just to vote for projects, to vote for or against projects we don't like it. I don't like it, I don't like the circumstances and situation, our job is actually to, in a public hearing, is a regulatory one, and it is to judge whether or not, when an application comes forward, it is compliant with policy. And I want to stress that, because this doesn't indicate whether or not a councillor loves or doesn't love it, wants to displace renters or doesn't. It's really about, are we doing our job? And I can't put all of this on the applicant, because they might have wanted to build it bigger, but they came in under the policy that existed. And so they probably don't love it either in terms of limiting to this size, but they're being respectful of the area plan and coming under the policy that is there. So the issue is the policy on the side. The issue, and I think it was raised, it was a really human and very important one, is a, people feeling that there isn't equity in having different levels of renter protections across the city. I heard that loud and clear, and I get that from a human perspective, is like, if, why if I live in the Broadway area, do I get some, do those folks get something higher? And someone gets something a couple of blocks over and they don't. But I'm also hearing, and I'm sure we're gonna have lots of robust conversations around the right level of renter protections and getting rental built in the city, but that's a conversation and a policy discussion that happens in the council forum. And outside of this forum, what these public hearings do though, and it's important, and I want to convey this to all the people that spoke tonight, is that it helps council to see the real-life impacts of some of these policies, and those can help inform some of the bigger policy conversations. So hearing that input and those voices is really important. So I'm gonna try to disclose my regulatory duties as a councillor, which is, is this compliant with policy? Yes. And you heard that, and that's my job, and you also heard from staff too, like, you know, some councillors, I thought, well, why didn't, why did staff bring this forward? Again, their job is to say, is it compliant with policy? They can't decide, well, you know, can I judge the age of the building or if I like it, or all those kinds of things. And I really heard loud and clear that this was about finding a place and people wanting to stay here. It was very interesting to me, this was probably one of the most unique public hearings we've had, because it wasn't, most of the older stock and the older buildings are typically lower rents, and there's a big rent gap, and this one, we're hearing they're playing market rental. So this was very unique kind of discussion tonight, I think, that we've had around this particular project. And I think there's gonna be a lot of takeaways from it, but I will reluctantly support it for the reasons that I've stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby Young. Councilor Frye?
Yeah, you know, echoing Councilor Kirby Young, I don't like it. I mean, I like it as a design, as a building, architecturally, amenities, like, project's great, drop it into a complete greenfield or brownfield site that there was nobody living there, and it would be fantastic. And, but that's not the case. And I, this is really a tough one, because there's people living here, and this is impacting people's lives. And, you know, and we heard loud and clear that there's the sense that we don't have equitable renter protections across our city. And we maybe haven't done a good enough job of articulating why the Broadway Plan is offering a different set of renter protections in theory, because we're adding this significant amount of density that can pay for that, and we're not doing that here. And so this is sort of constrained by the construct that we have in the Grandview Woodland Local Area Plan. But you know, Councilor Meisner and I were back and forth looking at the real estate brochure for this, and in April of 2019, this was advertised for sale for seven and a half million dollars with a cap rate of three-point-seven percent, which is a decent cap rate for real estate of this kind of nature. And it even showed a potential rendering of redevelopment that showed this architectural rendering practically. And so it strikes me so obscenely wrong that there is something really fundamentally wrong with our market and our system that, that even within attractive that, that even with an attractive cap rate like three point seven percent and, and a totally viable tenant base and stuff, that still there's this drive to, 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 to redevelop it. And, and so no wonder tenants are upset. And we heard that tonight because it really does seem like the rules are stacked against them. Uh, you know, we've seen even in recent weeks, the erosion of things like the Renters Office and, and concerns around living wage and all these kind of pieces that I think are, are really coming to a crux. And we're hearing that loud and clear from renters who aren't at the lower end of the scale where we have heard more in the past. These are renters who are at the, you know, paying close to market rents. And so clearly, you know, the, the, the rules are broken and the rules are stacked against tenants in, in our city. That being said, this project is following the rules. It is meeting the policy that we've set out as a council and, and we can be reactive. And we are, you know, expressing some reactivity here in the chambers. But the reality is, is if we want to move the dial, we have to be proactive and we have to bring in more robust kind of, uh, thoughtfulness around tenant protections, around how we can achieve those tenant protections on a, on a rezoning of this nature that if, if it needs, if it means that we need to add some more height or some more density or, or something there to, to, to offset the, the needs to relocate tenants. I'm very disappointed that we didn't s- see through with Counselor Carr's amendment that would have perhaps like at least offered a little bit more, uh, tenant, uh, relocation options for folks who are going to be displaced. And I'm, and I'm also on the, on the larger whole, you know, quite concerned about gentrification in this part of, of the city. These are, you know, I think many of us know this area pretty well. And there's a lot of older stock, affordable apartments. And I'm sure everybody living in this general vicinity is kind of a little bit nervous tonight watching this go down and thinking that their building, their modest nineteen fifties built stucco clad, two, three story walk-up apartment building could be next. And, um, I don't feel really good about that because there's a lot of that stock in this neighborhood and some of the more affordable stock in this part of town, in this, in this city. Uh, so I've, you know, very much been struggling with this, uh, you know, in many respects, my tendency would almost be to, to vote against it. I think I'm probably going to just abstain from voting because I do respect that this does meet all the policy that we have set out. And, and, you know, don't hate the player, hate the game, as they say, you know, this is, this is, you know, this does meet those objectives. And it's just a really horrible situation that we find ourselves in that really needs a lot of work, uh, yet to come. And I, and I know that, I know our staff think about this. I know, uh, you know, councillors, we're thinking about this and we need to do better. With those sort of tenant protections.
Thank you, Councilor Frye. Seeing no other questions, uh, in the comments, we're gonna down the vote. So clerk, please take us to the voting panel. Council, please register your vote. Okay, so the, uh, motion, uh, the, the item passed with, uh, Councilor Carr abstaining, Councilor Fry abstaining, Councilor Boyle in opposition, Councilor Dominado, Councilor Bly, and, and Mayor Seem absent. Thank you everyone. So we conclude.
Point of procedure, Mayor, uh, acting mayor? I was gonna give you your promotion there. Um, we don't normally read abstentions because abstentions count as votes in favor. We only read the, uh, votes opposed.
Okay.
Is that, is that not correct?
Uh, is that correct, clerk?
So if, if I understood that correctly, it was what wrote, uh, votes do we read? And typically it is the votes.
In opposition?
In opposition. Or, um, you identify whether the vote passed or failed. And then you identify if it was in, uh, who was in opposition.
Okay, so the, the item passed with, uh, Councilor Boyle in opposition. Okay, thank you everyone. We now conclude, uh, the item three on today's agenda. Now we are moving to the last item of the day, number four. Okay, zoning development bylaws amendments to schedule, uh, E building lines. Does any member of the council wish to declare conflict of interest? Okay, uh, the clerk will now read the application and the summary of the correspondence received.
This is an application by the General Manager of Engineering Services to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend the building line on the north side of East Hastings Street from Cassiar Street to Boundary Road. The building line on East Hastings Street was introduced in nineteen ninety-three. The intent was to provide wider street right of way for vehicle turning base on East Hastings Street. In the event the Skina Tunnel was closed as part of the Cassiar Connector project. The tunnel was not closed and city staff have determined, uh, four point three meter bu- building line can be amended to one point two meter. Um, following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing, three pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to five P M. Today.
Thank you clerk. Uh, if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. We have Tim Burton, uh, Civil Engineer, Transportation Division here to present the application.
Um, Chair, I'm wondering, uh, this is Counselor Boyle, if I can move to waive the presentation, given there's no speakers.
I think there is one speaker. Can you confirm that clerk?
That is correct. We do have one speaker who's been patiently waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, do we have, uh, Tim Burton here to do the presentation?
Uh, yes.
On the video, okay.
Hey, I'm with it. Chair, thank you. Share my screen.
Okay, I'll check with clerk. Can you check with that clerk?
Yes, that is the will of council.
Second, like, uh, mo- uh, all in favors, yeah? Uh, opposing, eh? Okay, so the motion carries with, uh, Counselor, uh, Kerr moved the motion and seconded by Counselor, uh, Montague. Okay, thank you. Uh, so now I think, uh, we're gonna move to the speaker. Okay, oh no, it's applicant team here to, uh, speak to the application. The city, okay. Are there any question from council to staff or applicant, applicant team noting this is the only opportunity for council to ask question of applicant? Okay, we will now hear from the public. So the speaker, please go ahead. Can we ask your first name and the last name, please?
Michelle McKinnis.
Oh, Michelle, okay. Can I also ask you if you are a Vancouver citizen? Uh, but sorry, Vancouver residents?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Please go ahead. You have five minutes.
I'm opposed to the amended proposal to narrow the sidewalks in this area on the north side of Hasting Street between Boundary and Cassiar. Uh, within this, uh, area, there has been, uh, there's currently and there, in the future, there's going to be a lot of condo development and increased population. And within that, I do feel that all the residents and the businesses are going to need that space for pedestrians. There's also a school close by and with increased population, I feel that, that students and parents and et cetera will be using the sidewalks. And also the other area is, uh, the P and E has got future plans for events that are going to be year round. And with that increase, you know, population of all the attendees going to year round events. And also the, uh, main bus, uh, con- loop, um, Kootenay Bus Loop is right there, which is a main hub for, uh, all such, such connections from Burnaby, et cetera. So I, uh, it should be the goal of the current council to preserve as much public space available for local residences. And, uh, I, I really think that, uh, for the safety and just for the, the use of the neighborhood, um, if they want, if any of these businesses want to have any sidewalk, uh, for any restaurant, cafe use, coffee shops, et cetera.
Thank you. Okay, thanks for speaking to council. Uh, if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number, phone number will be tweeted out and made available on live stream. Okay, clerk, can you confirm if we have any speaker?
No speakers.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna do two more time. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on live stream. So clerk, do we have any, any other speakers?
No.
Thank you. One more last time. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on live stream. Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No.
Okay, thank you. So there's no other speakers. So I suggest we take five minutes recess and we're gonna reconvene at, uh, ten forty-six to continue this item. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Let's, uh, come back, finish this item. So, uh, clerk, do we have any other people on the line?
No.
Thank you. So seeing no other additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Uh, after few, uh, as few or no public comments were received on this item after five P M. Today, I suggest we now close the receipt of the public comments and move on to the hearing of, uh, closing comments and asking further questions of staff and to make a decision. Does applicant have any closing comments? Oh, I take this as no?
No, thank you Chair.
Okay, does, does staff have any closing comments? I also take. Thank you. Does council have any question for staff? I saw Councilor Kirby Young on the queue. Councilor Kirby Young, are you still there? Okay.
Uh, Councilor Kirby Young still there or?
Oh, she's not voting, okay. Hey, Councilor Frye, please go ahead.
Thanks Chair. Um, I'm wondering if, uh, through you asking staff a few questions about, um, and just to get some clarity on, on, when I read this, uh, from three point six nine meters to zero point five nine meters,
And you can see there, I think between five and a half and six meters was achieved at that point, which is wide enough for a row of trees, sort of three, three and a half meters of clear pedestrian width, and then enough space for kind of a sandwich board or such, like up close to the building. And that's the standard that we're trying to achieve through the city. So this change to the building line would still allow us to achieve that five point five meters at a minimum.
At a minimum. Great. That's exactly what I needed to hear. Thanks very much, Tim.
Thank you, Councillor Fry. So seeing no other question on the queue, so uh, I guess council will make a decision on this application. Do we have a mover for a recommendation?
So moved.
All by Councillor Class, uh, Councillor Montague, seconded by Councillor Fry. Is there any debate, council? Seeing no, so we're gonna put onto a vote. So Clerk, please take us to the voting panel. And council, please register your, your vote. Councillor Boyle, you still need to vote?
Yes, sorry. Can I get a vote assist, assistant favor?
Thank you. Okay, so the, uh, the item passed with, with, uh, Councillor Kirby Young, Councillor Dominado, Councillor Bly and Mayor Sim absent. Thank you, everyone. So that conclude the last item on this agenda. We need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Adjourned by, uh, mo- mo- by Councillor Montague, seconded by Councillor Masner. All in favors, yeah? Oppose, in A? The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
...